Okay, we'll call the Tuesday, June 29th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Meeting to Order. Beth, we call roll.
Barry?
Here.
Cory?
Here.
Beau?
Here.
David?
Here.
We have a quorum, we will continue. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, well, we're gonna make a little adjustment to the agenda. We're gonna go through everything else but planning and zoning first, so that we can get people to work and then make sure we handle and address all concerns with regards to the planning and zoning portion of the meeting, which we expect to be a long, drawn-out process, but we're gonna make sure it's a fair and open debate on the topics at hand. So, let's start with the consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good timing. Okay, let's, uh... Let's jump down. We're gonna try and drag this out. Facilities, Keith, if you wanna come up?
Morning Commissioners, Keith Clevin, Facilities Director, Williams County. I have two items on the agenda this morning. The first being the freight elevator in Courthouse. It's the original elevator, and it's the only way that we can get gurneys down. Everyone's too small. It's just outdated, can't get parts. So, the price to replace that elevator is $285,000. Pardon? $285,000. And that's a full replacement with everything.
And that money was already put in with, out of the downtown renovation?
One sixteen fund.
So, we've got the money to replace it. What are the... What are the... We have, yeah, we probably have to handle these individually, I would imagine. What are the wishes of the board?
I would make a motion to approve facilities to replace the freight elevator.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
So, the second one I have on the agenda is for the elevator in the LEC. The parts for the ceiling lights are no longer available. Currently, we're at 12 of 24 lights operating in that elevator, so it's dark. The cost to replace that ceiling is $17,582.08.
The, uh, as opposed to using flashlights in the elevator?
I was gonna, could go to Midar and get puck lights.
Yeah. I know.
We're getting there.
Boy, these elevator companies have a... Have it going on.
And it sounds like this has been in the works for a while, but we couldn't get quotes and stuff due to COVID and people not being able to be in our facilities. So, now that we've got the quotes, it's time to, we'd like to move forward with it.
True. Okay, and again, the money is available.
Out of the one sixteen fund again.
Okay. Keith, what's the timeframe on both of these?
16 weeks to build it, get the parts. So, we'd be 16 weeks out before we'd even start. And then, I'm not sure on how long it'll take them to actually do the elevators, but the only thing is when we do the freight elevator in the courthouse, we'll have to make some concessions to get prisoners up and down because we do use that freight elevator to transport prisoners from the jail to court. So, we'll have to do a little workaround there, but the ceiling shouldn't be that big a deal once it comes in, but we're looking at about 16 weeks to just get everything built from Otis.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the LEC elevator ceiling replacement.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Steve?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Richard, if you wouldn't mind stepping up? Yeah, you're the next contestant. The price is right. Anyway, just wanted to take a moment to thank you for the, uh, great years of service that you provided in Williams County, and I also apologize for not making it into the big party yesterday, but thank you very much from myself and I would assume from the rest of the board.
It was a fun job.
Thank you very much, Richard.
Thank you.
Good luck in your next move. Yeah, poor guy. We'll be thinking about you in February. Yeah. Okay. Let's go to new business, and we'll start with Lonnie on the Bar Nothing Estates grant request.
Good morning. Lonnie Fleck, Interstate Engineering. At the last county commission meeting, the Frost Law Grant, uh, grants were reviewed, and I understand and appreciate that our project did not make the cut. Since then, I did talk to county finance because I was excited to hear about a low-interest loan program. I really, really appreciate the county's consideration of that. So, that's good news. The bad news for my project or our project out at Bar Nothing is that the program is just in its infancy stages, and I understand from Christie that it will take a while yet to get the guidelines set forth because it is a new program, which I totally understand. That being said, I did ask to be on the agenda today just to share that with all of you. I do have bids in hand and have been holding them for three months. I, of course, would like to get my project done. Absent a, uh, a low-interest loan program through the county, our project won't get done this summer. And we had some really competitive bids. If you recall, back in January, my project budget was $265,000. Now, because of final quantities and, uh, competitive bids, it's a $183,000 budget. And so, thanks to the commission, we did receive through the crew housing program, in the January review of that, we received $132,500. Again, thank you for that. That leaves our project about $50,000 short. And so, my ask today is respectfully consideration of a crew housing grant for that supplemental $50,000 that creates the shortfall for my project, and we'll delay it inevitably until next year, if not awarded.
Okay. Thoughts from the commission?
How many, um, residents are up there on this bar or none?
Bar nothing, there's 36 benefiting properties.
And you're looking to do a chip seal? Is that what it is, or a...
It's a asphalt patching, and it's a scrub seal.
Okay.
Correct. Really should've been done last year. So, it's been put off a year or two later than it should've already.
The, uh, the challenge is, of course, most of these projects are handled with specials, a special assessment district, and, uh, and that's always, uh, the tough part.
Yep. Understood.
They, you can't do that, or, um, or did I miss something there?
Yep. So, that was the discussion back in January, was to come to you to assist us in creating the SID. And at the time, the intention of the commission was to help us out by recognizing it's such a small project. To go through that administrative process is a bit burdensome, and so the suggestion was to split the budget in half and go half to the crew housing and half to the Frost Law. So, to answer the question, we can still do an SID. It's just, um, now I'm doing it for even lesser money than I came to you the first time, and it certainly would delay it till, until next year, and I just wanna keep this bid in hand. Hindsight being what it, what it is, I would've asked for 182.5 back in January, but I didn't know what the numbers would shake out to be.
So, Lonnie, 182.5 is the total cost?
That's my estimated cost, based on the bid that I received, correct? Everything gets finalized out at the end, of course, once we've measured everything.
I, I guess, uh, I should've pushed the button. I, I, I'm, my fear is we're opening a can of worms here, that we're not gonna be able to, to stop because at some point then everybody's coming to ask for the same thing, and I, and I, I think by doing the first grant, it was pretty huge, I almost feel like you're gonna have to go do specials for the rest of it. Just my opinion.
Is Christie here? Ah, there you are.
Good morning.
Good morning. Is there, uh... Help me remember where we're at with the, this, this low-cost program for...
Well, we were gonna talk about it at budget time. Um, it's only for townships, not for subdivisions. So, it's $250,000 with a 3% administration fee.
So, if they went to the township and the township sponsored the project, that would be the path forward for them?
You would have to have the township on board.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
So...
Any other questions, Christine?
Well, I would think that that should be easily, easily enough done. I mean, if there's 36 residents out there, and that's a pretty good portion of the township, I would think that they would look out for. I mean, that's what the township's there for, is to look out for the residents, so...
Which township is it? Stony Creek, or... Okay.
Is that all for me?
I think so. Thank you, Christie. So... That's gonna be our advice. There's no other, any other comments for Lonnie or thoughts? The... What we're trying to do is funnel everything through that, that program, and appreciate that you've been working through this process. And it's a, uh... It's not comfortable, I suppose, at this moment, but we're trying to make it all consistent and, and go forward on a, on the same path.
Totally respect what you're doing.
Okay. Thank you, Lonnie.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to remind you, the program is a loan that's paid back with specials.
Right.
You got that, okay.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, is Cal on the phone, did you say? Or here? Oh, Cal's here. Sorry. Didn't see you, Cal.
Good morning. Morning Commissioners, Cal Quinn, Theodore Roswell, Expressway, US-85. Just wanted to stop in and thank you for your continued support of our project. We are moving forward, piece by piece. Just came up, uh, through the bridge this morning. That's open to four lanes. I don't know if anybody's been down through that, but it is now open to four lanes, and, and one of the big projects they're doing right now is working in, in advance of the four-lane system from Watford City down to the north end of the bridge. They're doing some stabilization. They're investing a lot of money in there to get that stabilized, and we are working diligently to find the balance of the funding to get the, um, project from Watford City down to the north end of the bridge. We have support from the legislature on some, on $50 million, and that's based on federal grants that we've applied for, continue to apply for, and, and move that way. We have very strong support from the North Dakota Department of Transportation. That's always been a challenge, but right now, the environmental is done from Watford City down to I-94. If you wanna write a check for that, we can finish that up in the next couple of years. So, with that being said, I just wanted to give you an update. I know you do have information given to you that I sent out, and if you ever have any questions or anything, I'm available to do, uh, get, try to get you the answers, and we taking that project piece by piece and try to get it done as soon as we can. I do wanna thank you again for your support.
Well, it's a marathon. It's a marathon, not a sprint, right?
It's a long road.
Yeah.
But it, we're, we've made some progress, and like I said, the big thing has been the support from the DOT has really come around for us. Uh, we, we found out that we do, US-85 leads the, the state of North Dakota as a two-lane road of, of oversized permitted loads, and that's been a big, big challenge to get things moved forward on that. So, it carries a lot of, a lot of economic transportation issues for us.
That's for sure. Yeah.
That'll do.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the agenda? No, we should maybe get Helen's. Oh, Karen, Karen. Oh, yep, yep, Karen.
Yeah, I'm here to talk about the unfinished business of Kinder Morgan. Uh, just as a refresher, at the last board meeting, you directed me to draft a letter to the Public Service Commission about a pipeline easement that was, uh, operated by Kinder Morgan in Towne Rowan Township, uh, I believe it was Section 35. Uh, the day after the board meeting, I, uh, Kinder Morgan reached out to me and said that there was some concern about there because they believed that the easement was recorded, and they wanted to just really address it and try and do what really needed to take place in order to alleviate Dorothy Custer's concerns about the pipeline easement out there. And so, he actually sent me a recorded document. So, there was a recorded document for this easement there, and then apparently he's all, his name is Steve Lindquist anyways, from Kinder Morgan, and he did reach out to Dorothy Custer, and I believe that Steve is, yeah, Steve is in the audience right now, so I'll let him kind of explain and then, you know, address any questions you might have, really. So, uh, so I guess unless, uh, after Steve gets done, unless you direct me to continue to do the, the Letter to Public Service Commission, I, I guess if you want me to, you'll just have to let me know, so, all right?
Thank you, Karen.
A good turn with Steve, yep.
Hi, good morning. I'm Steve Lindquist with Kinder Morgan, uh, representing our subsidiaries, Highland Crude, Highland Partners, and Banner Transportation. Uh, I guess the, the reason we're, we came or wanted to reach out was that there was an article published titled, "Williams County Commissioners Going to Bat for Families Living Near Unmarked Pipeline." Uh, I think the, the issue was, the document was not recorded as Kinder Morgan or Highland Partners or Highland Crude, it was Banner. So, it made it a little bit difficult to find. Banner Transportation. So, uh, we did reach out to the PSC, the landowner, and, uh, Ms. Prouse. So, I guess unless there's any other questions, it's not, it's not gonna interfere with the pit, and, uh, it's at a safe distance, so...
Problem solved.
Yeah, I would hope so.
So, it, it's, it's recorded and marked, and everything is good to go, right?
Yep.
Well, that's, I like them easy ones.
You know, it's amazing when, what happens when people talk?
Yeah.
And communicate, and...
Well, I think that was our reaction, was just to reach out and see what we could do, because we don't wanna interfere with, uh, the Dennerts gravel pit, um, and also alleviate Dorothy's concern that there is a pipeline that could be hit. That was so close to her residence and also the Moline's, so I think they're all pretty satisfied, so unless there's anything else from us, or...
We wanna, let's not create any make-work projects here, so...
Good. Thanks for having us.
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks for being responsible and reaching out. Okay. Let's, uh... Anything else? Helen, ready?
Cam not bringing paper copies anymore. Thanks, Beth. All right, you can see we're requesting permission to fill one position. It is a corrections officer position in the sheriff's office.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Beau?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes. Motion passes.
We do have one board position, but we're going to delay so that the annexation board can meet to discuss, so we'll see that in July. That's all I have.
Oh, man, that was quick. Okay. So, let's jump into planning and zoning. Oh, so wait, sorry. Sorry, Sam. Prematurely, uh, jumped up here. Dennis, do you wanna give a update?
Well, Lonnie was up here, she could've updated you, but Interstate finished the County 10 project. Not finished, but it's all paved, looks good. Uh, cleanup to do now, uh, from Tyowa School over to 19. Uh, the, the box culvert at the entrance of Blacktail Dam, we've had it closed, uh, putting in the box culvert. Hopefully, with any luck at all, they'll be able to open the road just for the long weekend. They're shooting really hard by maybe tomorrow night to have that just for the weekend open, and then it'll close again, and then they'll go to the, the one further to the east where the bridge is at Blacktail. Because it's, it's a busy weekend, and it's a busy place, and it's awful washboardy and dusty and dirty, and, but they can go around in County 5, stay on the pavement, and go down to County 10 to get into Blacktail. So, there's a non-dust route and smoother route, or you can take the dusty, dirty, washboardy route. Okay? Uh, we did start mowing today. We've had a few showers in the last, like, this past weekend, so we started mowing just the pavement. We're gonna mow just the pavement for now, and then, maybe as a group, we can make the decision if we go to the gravel, because we don't burn down Williams County, but we, we just gotta, we're just gonna have to see how things go for the gravel. Uh, hitting a spark in the, on the rocks could make a lot of excitement. So, for right now, we have less of a chance on pavement. We still can on the pavement too, but a much less chance. Uh, County 7 is, uh, a little bit behind, not too bad, probably a week behind of what, what they were hoping to be at, but it's fine. It's, uh, it'll be done by completion date, uh, August 14th, I believe, is the completion date. Everything's lined up, that should be plenty of time to having that finished up. Striping will start soon. Other than that, that's all I have.
What do the mowers have for fire control with them, anything?
Just a fire, just a...
Water extinguisher?
Like you carry on your combine, the compressed, yeah, that one. Like compressed water, what do you call them? Yeah.
I, the only reason I mention, because, uh, the fire department in Beanville is testing a new style fire extinguisher. Looks just like that, but it carries a special foam, and I've watched them put out a car fire with one. So, we're gonna test those for grass fires and whatnot, see what they'll do. But they're reasonably priced, it'd be worth carrying something like that.
Yeah, just let me know where, where fire safety maybe, huh? Do they have them?
They're special order out of California.
Okay. Okay.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thanks, Dennis. Okay, now we can go, Sam. Sorry. False starts here.
Good morning. Commissioners, Sam Miller with Williams County Planning and Zoning.
Good morning.
So, first on the agenda for planning and zoning items, we have LU-0071-21. Mr. Babic is requesting a conditional use permit for a home occupation on an, a one-acre parcel. This parcel is currently zoned residential. It will be updated to urban residential with the comprehensive county zoning map update. The home occupation would be to conduct services for firearms and ammunition business. The applicant is in the process of obtaining an FFL through the ATF. The applicant has stated that nearly all business will be conducted online and/or off-site, and thus, the applicant is not anticipating more traffic than would generally be seen in a neighborhood like this. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item and recommended unanimous approval of the item with two conditions. The first is to adhere to all of our county zoning or subdivision ordinances, as well as to follow all the requirements listed in the ordinance under home occupations.
Okay, is the applicant present? Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
Make a motion to follow planning, zoning recommendations.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is LU-0055-21. Mr. Schifler is requesting a conditional use permit for an additional single-family dwelling on a 3.7-acre parcel. The property is currently zoned agricultural. Um, the applicant's current home on the property is a one-room schoolhouse built in 1908. He would like to convert the existing pole barn on the property into a residence and utilize the schoolhouse as a guest house and also a space to homeschool his children. The township recommended approval with comments. Staff followed up with those comments, and then they changed their response to simply approval. It was just more of a question, um, an administrative question that had to be answered. Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item and recommended unanimous approval for this item with the following conditions. One, to adhere to all Williams County zoning and subdivision regulations. Two, if construction related to the CUP does not start within 18 months of approval and no extension has been granted, the board can revoke the CUP. And then, three, completion of the current minor re-subdivision process. So, they're working through, um, a minor re-subdivision for, uh, basically a lot line adjustment to make sure all of the buildings are in compliance with the, our subdivision regulations.
Okay, is the applicant present? Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve and follow the recommendations, the three recommendations, uh, from planning and zoning.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Little bit. He's, he's converting the barn into, the pole barn into the house and then the house is gonna be a, more or less a guest cottage or whatever. But now in the future then, if he were to sell it, the CUP will not transfer to, uh, the future owner. So we, we talked about this at planning and zoning and I wonder if. Maybe is there, is there, is there some tweaking on that? That we can do for, you know, not, not all CUPs, but you know, residential ones like this? Cause I think it kind of, you know, it kind of ties their hands being under that CUP and for the future.
Yeah, so it was brought up at planning and zoning. Uh, we do get a lot of requests for CUPs for additional dwellings and I think that's kind of what Commissioner Randberg's referring to. We are exploring that as staff. I'm not sure how to proceed with this one in particular since we haven't really come to a conclusion in our like analysis around that, but yes, that's correct. So with the conditional use permit, it does not transfer with every subsequent owner. So only Mr. Schifler will hold the CUP for the two dwellings on the property. If you were to sell that next owner, if they wanted to utilize both residences, they would have to come and reapply for a conditional use permit for an additional dwelling. That's just the way our ordinance is set up currently.
Is there a way to? I mean, the next, when he goes to sell, he's gonna know that, right? I mean, that's, are we depending on somebody to know that ahead of time and?
So Mr. Schifler will have this decision letter, uh, whatever the decision may be. And we kind of would hope that they would transfer that on to the next property owner, but it's not tied to the deed. It's in our files, but it's not guaranteed to be passed down to the next property owner as a heads up.
Would there be a, I mean, could there be a simple solution, like just recording that CUP? As a part of it, to go with the parcel ID or property?
I'm not sure what that would look like.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's kind of part of the exploration process of either, we were talking about just allowing it as a permitted use for properties over a certain acreage to have two dwellings on the property. We, we've been looking at other counties to see what they do for things like this. Or if it's not a CUP, maybe it's a variance or some other method where it's tied to the land, not to the owner.
Understood. Not much we can do about it at this point, but maybe for future, we'll have a, a different solution. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, Beth roll call vote.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is LU dash zero zero six four dash two one. Mr. Andre is requesting a variance to allow construction of an accessory structure that is not incidental to a permanent primary use. This property is 80 acres and it's currently zoned agricultural. So a little background on this one, um, Mr. Andre just wants to construct, um, a storage building basically for his personal, um, uh, things, but it's not related to agricultural. And so typically if it's not, or the ordinance states that if it's not, um, either incidental to, let's say he puts a house on there and then he puts a storage unit, that would be an accessory structure to the primary structure. However, this one's just an accessory structure and it's not related to ag, so, um, he's working through the variance process currently. The planning and zoning heard this and recommended unanimous approval contingent upon building permits and inspections being obtained as required by the building code, as well as adherence to all Williams County zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations.
Okay, is the applicant present? Right, what are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve and follow recommendations of planning and zoning.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Beth roll call vote.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Next, the next item on the agenda is LU dash zero zero six seven dash two one. Wisco Inc. is requesting a conditional use permit amendment to include T-NORM or a technologically enhanced naturally occurring radioactive material waste disposal at an existing special waste landfill for 103 acre parcel. This parcel is currently zoned industrial. However, the next item on the agenda is a staff-initiated zone change to heavy industrial. So the applicant is requesting an amendment to an existing conditional use permit. Um, the existing conditional use permit applied for or by Wisco was granted approval on May 7th, 2013 for, for the purpose of a special waste landfill. In your packet is the approval letter for that initial CUP request. The request for the CUP amendment is to include the disposal of T-NORM, um, waste up to but not exceeding 50 pico carries per gram of radium 226 plus radium 228 at the existing landfill. So there are a bunch of items, um, as you all know, there was a moratorium that was placed on all pending and future zoning applications and permits for T-NORM facilities or disposal of T-NORM back in December of 2019. The purpose of this moratorium was to gather more information about T-NORM and the effects it may have on the community. The moratorium expired on May 1st and applications for the acceptance of T-NORM were accepted following that expiration. Staff did reach out to DEQ, both to the solid waste side as well as the radiation control side, to gather information, um, more specific to T-NORM in general, their processes, just to gather, to gain a better perspective and understanding of what they look for, um, on their side. So those questions and answers are also included in your packet. So there is, um, the CUP evaluation criteria. This is not a CUP, but it is an amendment to an existing CUP. And this criteria is still used to evaluate the use. So I'm gonna just kind of run through the seven evaluation criteria. Staff had provided comments and that's italicized underneath each criterion. So first, the use complies with all applicable regulations of the district in which it is located or a variance has been granted. Staff's comment is, "The amendment to the applicant's CUP is an appropriate request for this zoning district. The property is located within the industrial zoning district. This is also the old zoning district, but like I said, it will be updated to heavy industrial. This is being proposed to be updated to heavy industrial where industrial sites are permitted. The addition of T-NORM is not altering the footprint of the site as it will be in addition to existing cells on the facility." Number two, "The use complies with the applicable development standards and performance standards of this ordinance." Staff's comment is, "This facility is existing and is secured by a fence around the entire facility." Number three, "The establishment, maintenance and operation of the use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare." Staff's comment, "The open storage of material, including waste products, is prohibited within 300 feet of any residence. All materials must be stored in accordance with state law in such a way as to provide access to fire and other emergency services. The applicant must follow policies and regulations that are put forth, regulated and monitored by the DEQ and are detailed in the staff report attachments." Number four, "The use will not impede the normal or orderly development or impair or diminish the value and enjoyment of other property within the district." Staff's comment, "This property is located within the employment area. This area is identified in the comprehensive plan as an area where existing commercial and industrial uses exist today and where future similar uses can efficiently be located in the future. The applicant is anticipating no added traffic to the facility and if anything, it may reduce outbound traffic since T-NORM waste will be disposed of across the highway at their landfill." Number five, "The physical conditions of the site, including topography, drainage, size and shape are suitable for the proposed development." Staff's comment, "The site was approved by the Williams County Water Resource Board at the time of development back in 2014. There is an existing leachate pond. The original CUP was granted with approval of a stormwater management plan. The addition of T-NORM will not alter the footprint of the site, so water board approval will not be deemed necessary, or was not deemed necessary. If they are to change the footprint of the site from the original plan, they will have to obtain water board approval." Number six, "Adequate utilities, access road, drainage and other necessary site improvements have been provided or will be provided prior to the conditional use permit initiated." Staff's comment, "The site is serviced by Montreal Williams Electric Cooperative for electricity. They haul in water monthly and there is an in-ground septic tank on site." Number seven, "Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize, minimize traffic congestion, road dust and impacts to adjoining properties." Staff's comment, "The site takes access from US Highway 2 or 50th Street Northwest." Staff did reach out to North Dakota Department of Transportation and they stated that they would like to see a trackout pad on both of Wisco's approaches onto Highway 2, so that is the north approach and the south approach. This is due to mud concerns." So Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this item at a special meeting that was held yesterday, um, on June 28th. The commission voted to recommend denial, uh, with a seven to two vote. However, did want to state that, um, Planning and Zoning Division staff has comments associated with if this were to be approved, there are a list of five conditions, um, and I can go through those if you'd like. But for now, I'll just breathe for a second and ask if you have any questions.
I think it's important, uh, uh, that these criteria are heard because staff spent a lot of time working on this and dove right in and, uh, we are not experts. I'll speak for myself, I'm no expert in this. And so it's, it's very much appreciated with the, the time, energy and effort put into, to researching this, uh, to make an appropriate recommendation to laypeople such as us. So, um, this, this packet is extensive. It's detailed, it's long, and it's important to hear. And I think it can be easy to glance over this as laypeople and not take full appreciation for its content. So I for one would like to hear the additional, uh, Planning and Zoning Division comments and, and the thought process behind it, um, because I think we need to give it all the consideration due. So.
Absolutely. So Planning and Zoning Division comments are as follows. One is, if this were to be approved, the approval of this CUP amendment would be contingent upon adherence to Williams County zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. Number two, "The use shall comply with all state and federal regulations and all local fire, zoning and other applicable ordinances, codes, rules and regulations." Three, "The CUP amendment is contingent upon the applicant receiving approval from the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality and Waste Management for radioactive materials license and a solid waste management permit and other associated state approval if required." Number four, "Following approval from NDDQ to accept T-NORM waste, they are limited to the state limit of 50 pico carries per gram of RA 226 and RA 228 with a limit of 25,000 tons per year and no more than 3,000 tons in any one month." Number five, "Install a trackout pad for each approach onto Highway 2 per recommendation by DOT." And then please refer to the Williams County Highway Trackout Pad standards. And I do just want to mention, a representative from DEQ is in the audience and the applicant is in the audience too with any, for any specific questions you may have for them.
Okay, so just kind of following through, uh, just trying to make a logical order of things and make sure we, we cover all our bases and make sure everybody's heard. I, I think it would be natural then to flow to DEQ for, for comments and, uh, Diana, if you'd like to come on up. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Kemp and Commissioners. My name is Diana Trussell and I am the Solid Waste Program Manager for the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to provide information regarding the department's technologically enhanced naturally occurring radioactive material or T-NORM regulations. In 2013, the department commissioned Argon National Laboratories, or ANL, to determine landfill radiation limits that would be safe for workers in the public. A copy of the summary of that ANL study was provided in your packet with it, it was a one-page summary. ANL is a internationally recognized scientific leader in the field of radiation. The department provided information on oilfield-related T-NORM. ANL used the maximum recommended public exposure of 100 milligrams per year to calculate an acceptable safe disposal limit for North Dakota. The study looked at the exposure pathways of external radiation, inhalation and ingestion of contaminated material and ingestion of food and water from a closed landfill. The study also considered a self-sufficient farmer living on that closed landfill. After a thorough evaluation of the potential exposure pathways, the ANL study found that limiting exposure to T-NORM came from a worker employed at an active landfill, so the one that would actually be working with the material day in, day out. The department used that result to set a disposal limit of 50 pico carries per gram, which was incorporated into our existing T-NORM regulations. The department established the T-NORM regulations to ensure proper handling and disposal of T-NORM waste that would be protective of both human health and the environment. Because the federal government does not regulate T-NORM, it is left up to the, each state to establish T-NORM regulations if necessary. A copy of other state, um, T-NORM disposal limits was provided in your packet. Not all states have T-NORM regulations because T-NORM is usually associated with oilfield activities. North Dakota's T-NORM regulations are some of the most protective and stringent in the country. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Number one thing that I take from that is that you established 50 pico carries as a safe limit for workers that are gonna be exposed to this on an everyday basis, very close to this waste. What is the, um, trying to understand the radioactive component to this? Is the T-NORM that we're talking about actively shooting out particles that are shooting holes through our bodies at, at all distances? Can you describe what it is that people are exposed to?
Yep, so when they did the study, we did look at, you know, the worker, we looked at the surrounding public, you know, with that and it was determined that by keeping that worker safe, the one that's gonna be, say, on top of the landfill and the waste, if you keep them safe, everyone else is kept safe because they're the ones most likely to be exposed and have the most exposure at that time, because it is constantly emitting. But it's also, the further you get away, your dose goes significantly down with it. So again, by keeping that worker safe on the landfill, everyone else is kept safe and is even more protected from that.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm sure you're gonna end up back at the podium at various times, but.
I do have one quick question for Diana. I, and, and maybe I missed it, but I, I've only been through this about nine times. Number four on the comments talks about the 25,000 tons per year and no more than 3,000 tons per month. How's that tracked? Who, who keeps track of that and how do we, how do we know, you know, I mean, how do we know that?
So each of these, um, facilities, all of our oilfield special waste landfills currently submit a monthly report to us. And as part of that, they have to say what waste they've accepted. So that would be incorporated not only into the monthly report, but it's also the annual report with it. And so we would keep track both that ways. Also, anytime we go out for an inspection, we can pull their records at any point or we can call them and say, "I need to know what your tonnage is with it." So that would be tracked closely by both Solid Waste Program, but also the Radiation Control Program, who would require, I believe, quarterly reports.
And how do we verify? I mean, is it, are we just, how do you verify that it's? I guess what I'm trying to say is I can write anything down on a piece of paper, but how is it verified?
Yep, so they also, the sites both will have receipts that, you know, tonnage receipts with it. So when a customer comes in, they're gonna track how much came in on that load. And so typically that's what we'll see as a spreadsheet, but they would have that, so we could ask for their tickets with it. And that's what gets weighed across the scales. All that has to be recorded.
And that would show if it was at 50 pico carries or if it was lower or higher?
What'll happen too is they're gonna characterize the load, so it could be on a load basis, it could be several, but they'll have, they have to have the corresponding analysis. Um what'll happen too is they're going to characterize the load, so it could be on a load basis, it could be several, but they'll have, they have to have the corresponding analysis to show and prove that is not over the fifty point zero pico carry per gram limit with it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And then there's you you, we talked about you can blend it down, right? So if it if if it came in at fifty or thirty and then you had another load at twenty, if you mix them together, it it would knock them both back to twenty-five, correct?
So how it works with it is if you do blend, yes, you it would average out. It's not a cumulative effect, it's more of an average. They are not allowed to blend to get under the fifty.
Okay, that was that was my follow-up deal. He had something come in at seventy-five and I mean, can you blend it down to get a fifty average?
Um blending or diluting is prohibited with that.
And then they also, um they can have uh like the hard equipment, you know, like the um tubing and polish rod, you know, I mean, you know, that it ain't just material, it ain't just, it's not just dirt, it's actually equipment too, correct?
Yep. So how the rules are written is there is the disposal limit of the fifty point zero grams per sorry, fifty pico carries per gram for radium two twenty-six, two twenty-eight. There's also a screening limit for contaminated equipment, which is based on that disposal limit. It's much harder to sample equipment, you can't just take a piece and analyze that. So then we have a screening limit set for that that is also matches that fifty. And that's what they would have to screen for to ensure that stays under the limits.
Okay, and we're going to stay with DEQ just for a second. We're going to withhold other comments just for a moment. Uh the next question that I have, oh, go ahead Barry, go ahead.
Um getting back to the to the the equipment then, so this fif- this fifty pico carries per gram, you're talking about weight gram, right?
Yep, it's a lab analysis that has to be done with it.
So then like if I if you brought in a a a treater, you know, I mean, it it weighs tons. So would not, I mean, I'm have I'm having trouble getting the the iron figured back from the ton to this per gram. I mean, it would, you know, if you had a if you had a treater that was, you know, ten thousand pounds at fifty pico carries per gram, wouldn't that be quite a little hotter than uh you know, a ton of dirt?
So that's where we're talking two different things. So we have the lab analysis, which is that fifty point zero pico carries per gram limit. Um where they actually take a sample of the contaminated material, it gets sent to a lab and they let us know what the um combined radium two twenty-six, two twenty-eight is. With any contaminated equipment, we have a hundred micro our per hour limit um for screening. So that's where they'll actually use like a Ludlum meter to determine that it passes that. That is loosely correlated with that fifty point zero pico carry per gram because you can't take a sample necessarily get a representative sample of contaminated equipment to send that off to the lab for the analysis with it. So that's how those two work.
Okay, and then following this, let's uh um for the sake of conversation, assume things, we pass both of these. Uh it's not done there, right?
Correct.
We have just, if if these were approved, they have simply been approved from a planning and zoning perspective, then what happens?
So what they have to do next is submit a permit application to the Sol waste program. It's to modify their existing permit. These are existing sites, they're already in operation with it. They also have to submit a radioactive materials license to our radiation control program. Both of those go under review by the department. And then based on our review, we have a couple of options. If we find that they're missing any information, we can declare the application's deficient. They get an opportunity then to reply and fix any of those deficiencies and resubmit for another review. If everything comes in perfect the first time and we feel that we are ready to issue a draft permit and a draft radioactive materials license, then we will go out for public comment. We have a thirty-day public comment period where we have the option to hold a hearing. Um like last time, we did hold one with that, we would take comments. We review any and all comments that come in and then make a determination. At that point, we have um three choices. Based on the comments, we can rec- um we can either approve the permit and license as is. If there's any comments that um on a technical nature, say that we need to reevaluate conditions, we can amend both the permit and the license based on that, or we can deny the permit and license. Um I should note, they have to have both the permit and license to operate. You can't have one or the other with it. Um if they were to get denied, they would just continue operating as is without accepting the T norm waste.
Okay, and it's important to note that the both of these landfills exist now, the footprint is not changing.
Correct.
Uh physically, nothing changes. What does change is if they get approved for planning and zoning, then get approved by the state and make it through the public hearings, uh if there is one deemed necessary, then they can accept up to fifty pico carries per gram and other measurements as needed with equipment.
Yep. Yeah, they'd be eligible to accept the T norm waste.
Okay. And so our job is planning and zoning, following the criteria as set forth by our planning and zoning department. And that's what we're here to do, if I'm understanding that correctly. Just want to make sure I'm clear, because I'm a slow learner and I want to understand this uh very well. Any more questions for Diana from a DEQ perspective?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Diana, if this is approved, it's it's approved as a conditional use permit from Williams County. If Williams County decides in the future that something doesn't meet what we feel is right, something happens, and we have the right to rescind that conditional use permit. What's the procedure? I think I asked this question eighteen months ago and you explained it very well. But if you would refresh my memory and everybody else's memory, what's the procedure in the states uh play in a permit that's a condition use permit that's rescinded by the county?
Sure. So my understanding, and I would have to confirm with the department's attorney on this, is all of our permits are issued with a condition that states that the permittee must follow and abide by all local zoning authority. The state does not supersede local zoning authority with that. If the conditional use of permit or the amendment, say it was approved, but then um it's taken back later or, you know, not approved with it, um the permittee would have to still follow what that was. So we would have to amend our permits with it. Uh my understanding is too, if, say, all the conditional use permits were denied, um even for the existing sites, uh we would still have to have a permit that would go through closure and post-closure care with it. Uh but again, I would have to check with our attorney to confirm that, but that is my understanding based on conversations I've had with the agency's attorney with it.
So I think your your question is getting at whether or not we still have some control.
Well, yes, and and I guess the other thing would be, to me, it's another added added layer of protection, uh both on the local and the state level.
Just so I understand that, so if if we rescinded it, you say it would it would go to closing the the landfill? Or would it just go back to they couldn't receive the, would it go back to the old or depending on what we did with the CUP?
That would depend on what the county does with the CUP. So if we're docking just the amendment, if that was approved and then that part was, you know, rescinded later on, it would revert back. If the entire CUP, even for the existing site, was pulled, then we would have to go through the closure process.
Okay, thanks.
Has has there been, I I know there's no active T norm landfill in the state now, but has there been applications in the past? Uh I mean, somewhere else that made it through and the state denied it or is this a new uh critter?
So when the rules came into effect in um 2016, we received three applications. Uh two here in Williams County for both Wisco and Secure. We also had received one for IHD. Um they withdrew their application and we have not seen anything else since then. So we have not seen any other applications, have not heard about any other applications in the state with that.
Okay, but just to be clear, radioactive waste is being disposed of right now by KT Enterprises?
Yep, not at a landfill, that's through a injection well that's does not go through solid waste. They have a radioactive materials license and then it goes through NDIC.
Right, so it's regulated not by the DEQ but by NDIC?
Partially by DEQ through the radioactive materials license, but um NDIC handles the rest of it.
Okay, so there is disposal of radioactive material being done right now in McKenzie County?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, injections, three-well injection.
But keep in mind that that slurry well, I guess as I call it, uh is limited to what they can accept also.
Yep, and I did go down on tour for public information. I did personally go down and walk through the site. Uh it's very interesting, um it's nice that they can dispose of waste there. Uh but again, obviously, this this board isn't in the uh position of picking whose business does what. Uh we just have to pick an appropriate, is this an appropriate application? Is this an appropriate application? And the market determines how business functions. Any additional questions for Diana?
Not right now.
That's fine, I'd be happy to answer questions at any time, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh I it's appropriate, it's, you've been itching to get up here, come on up.
I promise not to add any additional comments um at this time. Uh I just wanted to provide a little bit more insight. You guys had a couple of excellent questions. Um to to your question, Commissioner Kemp, um the the radioactivity that's emanated from radioactive waste takes three forms, alpha, beta and gamma. So there's three different types of radiation. Don't let that scare you, doesn't mean it's even more dangerous. That's the essence of physics and the science behind it. The alpha particles, they they literally can travel one to two and a half inches. So when we talk about surrounding properties or or other locations, it's really not a concern because it can't travel very far. So alpha is the most dangerous internally. If we take it into our bodies, it has the most potential to create damage. So we don't have to worry about alpha in this case. Beta particles, these these are actual elements, portions of atoms, right? An electron is cast off from the atom and that's a beta particle. It can travel no more than ten feet. So again, we're not talking about particulate that is jumping across parcels, sections of land contaminating the entire planet, right? Uh so beta particles and alpha particles are not a consideration. So what we're left with is gamma. Now gamma theoretically could travel up to a mile theoretically. Uh when you look at the summary provided by NDDH in 2014, that's in your packets, the dose rate uh coming from the landfills to adjacent property is estimated at point zero two four milligram. Okay, so now we're getting into numbers, uh so so hang with me. Point zero two four milligram, if you consider, bring some context to it. You and I as average citizens in the US are exposed to six hundred and twenty milligram uh of radiation. That's our dose rate every single year. That comes from medical, comes from background radiation in the ground, solar, comes from breathing. So we get twenty-five thousand times more dose just living our lives than we would get at an adjacent property to a landfill.
Okay, so it is cumulative though, right? I mean, it is, so you get that normal everyday rate, but then somebody that's living adjacent to this is going to get one twenty?
That's that point, that point zero two four milligram, point zero two four, that's in a year.
Okay.
Point zero two four in a year is what the the study showed from Argon National Labs. Um the dosimetry badges that we wear, the the detectable range for every quarter that we wear them is ten milligram. So when you go point zero two four for an entire year, it doesn't even click the meter, right? It there's there's nothing there. So does that does that help with your question?
Wanting to understand how safe it is. I mean, we have people that live right next to the landfills right on this board, so I mean, I'm trying to address the safety issue.
Great question and it deserves it deserves a full answer. And Diana did a good job too, but but again, we get down to particulate and atoms, right? And these pico carries that we measure, I mean, it's just one pico carry, two teeny tiny atoms, that it's it's microscopic stuff. Uh Commissioner Ramberg, to your question on the equipment, that the the measurement is, as Diana indicated, is a hundred milligram at any exposable point. So you're talking about fixed contamination. Um when it's fixed contamination, you don't have the leachate issues. Rain's not going to fall on the landfill and just remove this contamination because it's fixed in place on fire tubes, on tubing, on this this kind of stuff, right? So there's no leaching effect. Um and and so even though you have this, pick a number, ten ten-ton tank or or treater, some some large object, the reading, the dose rate coming off of that equipment still has a maximum cap. It's not averaging the concentration of the total unit. It's if I get next to this tank or this treater, what's the most dose rate I can get off of it? Doesn't matter how big it is, it can't exceed a hundred mil- micro rankin, I said milligram, excuse me. It can't exceed a hundred micro rankin per hour or it's rejected at the landfill. So it doesn't matter how big or small it is, the the dose rate is exactly the same.
This is a little late, but you should introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah. My apologies, Kurt Kurt Ray with Radiation Pros.
Thank you, Kurt. Uh we should now move on to allowing Wisco to add any comments and or thoughts that they have, they are the applicant.
Thank you, everyone on the commission. I'm Paul Swenson with Bar Engineering Company. I work for Wisco. Uh we have a, what I hope is a brief presentation if you would like to see uh some of the information we've assembled to describe what we're asking for.
Please and thank you.
So the first few slides just gives Wisco an opportunity to explain who they are, what they've been doing in the in the community for many decades. Let you go ahead, Stu.
For the record, my name is Stuart Sun. I'm the area sales manager for Wisco Incorporated. Uh Wisco as a company has operated out of Williston since nineteen sixty-eight. Uh we currently employ one hundred and forty-five throughout the Bakken region. We are owned by Omni Environmental Solutions. Uh they provide our financial and technical backing. Uh our local management team has deep roots in the area. Uh Chuck Moline, our general manager of the Bakken region, is a sixty-five-year resident of Williston and Williams County. Uh he has forty-four years of employment at Wisco. Kevin Cole, our division manager, is an operations associate. He's a fifty-five-year resident of Williams County and a twenty-six-year employee of Wisco. Uh John Norby, a production services lead, forty-three resident, forty-three-year resident of Williams County, uh twenty years employment at Wisco. Myself, Stuart Sun, twenty-five-year resident of Williams County. Uh I've been employed with Wisco for seven years. So uh as as Wisco has operated here in support of the oil industry over this long period of time, in uh in the early, in early two thousand teens, they saw a need to provide additional waste management, waste disposal services. So in between two thousand eleven and two thousand fourteen, uh we helped them permit their saltwater disposal well.
the waste liquids treating plant, and the landfill that is currently in op, all of which are currently in operation. Recently, more recently, as the T-Norm rules were adopted by the DEQ, they also saw a need to start managing T-Norm waste to support the oil industry. And just as of the last few days, we did a little research and saw that there are four active rigs, drill rigs, in Williams County. And with Williams County being the fourth highest oil-producing county in North Dakota, there is certainly some waste product that is being produced that needs to be managed somewhere. So the landfill is, as you're aware, is regulated, permitted, and inspected by the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, the NDDQ. The landfill design, I have overseen the effort to prepare. The permit application, if approved by the board, will go to the DEQ. That landfill design complies with all of the strict DEQ rules for T-Norm landfills. And the DEQ also then conducts rigorous monthly inspections to verify that the landfill is being operated in accordance with all the design and operational plans that we put together. The landfill, while all of these facilities are about 18 miles west of Williston, out in the countryside, not too many people nearby, although Bo is a neighbor. And this is what the permit footprint looks like. Highway 2 is on the north side. You can see a little bit of it going across the upper left, thank you. And the landfill itself, where the waste is being deposited, is within that trapezoid on the eastern side of the property. We were somewhat limited in our footprint due to the woody draw that crosses the middle of the property north to south. There are four cells that we will be developing. Cell 1 is currently constructed and is beginning to fill. We'll be looking at constructing a new cell sometime in the near future. The leachate pond that has been mentioned is that rectangle that's on the south side of the landfill. And then there are stormwater management facilities around the landfill, controlling erosion and water quality from stormwater runoff that outside of the landfill. Anything that falls inside of the landfill is managed as leachate. So the stormwater is just for water that's outside of the landfill footprint. And this gives a little better overview with a photo. So you can see the current landfill operations on the east side there. And in the monitoring system, the orange dots are monitoring wells that we use to monitor groundwater quality. The green dots just help us track groundwater levels so that we can tell which way groundwater is flowing. And there's some surface water monitoring points. And then we will be adding a gateway monitor to... That Louis will be describing a little bit later in the discussion here that will give a more accurate picture of all of the waste loads that are coming into the landfill. The DEQ rules, I think, are some of the better rules in the nation as far as citing landfill. We have to cite landfills where there are no highly permeable soils underlying it. So here at this site, we have a glacial till at the top, which is fairly low permeability. And then there's a clay material, which is also low material. This site was a little unusual in that at the bottom, we found something called volcanic tuff, which is volcanic ash from ancient activity that has deposited. And after a little investigation, we found that volcanic tuff also exhibited very low permeability characteristics. I think we can go to the next slide, but I might, yeah, go back, please, one more back here. So the minimum distance, you can see the blue groundwater line there. The minimum distance between the landfill bottom and the groundwater line is about six feet. Most areas is much greater than that. But even with that, six feet, we, from the samples we collected and analyzed and the math that was performed to estimate travel times, we had determined that it would take about 10,000 years for groundwater, for leachate, if there were a leak, for leachate to make it to the groundwater. So that, to us, tells that this is a, it's a pretty protective site. Next slide.
Hi, I'm Seth Heckman with Bar Engineering. I've had the pleasure to be the design engineer out here since the beginning. I've helped with the permitting activities and then the detailed design for each phase. The first sale we built in 2014, and then we just raised it, I think, in 2019. I guess from a landfill design perspective, as Paul mentioned, I just want to talk about multiple layers of protection here. As Paul mentioned, it's, the geological setting is really good. It's low permeability soils. That's our first mode of protection. Even if we didn't have a liner system, the testing we've done shows it takes thousands of years for leachate to get down into our uppermost aquifer. Our second layer protection is what you see here, a composite liner system. This is a very robust system. There's 36 inches of clay. There's a 60-mill geomembrane on top of that. And when they work in conjunction, they're very impermeable. As you can see, the membrane is a thin layer. If it were to puncture, our clay layer is 36 inches thick. You can't, you can't get through that. If the geomembrane leaks, the clay minimizes that and that seals it. So that's our second layer of protection. Our third layer of protection, that's not shown here, is our leachate collection system. The drainage layer in GeoNet, as you can see above the geomembrane, that flows into a sump area where we collect leachate and pump it out into the leachate pond. And the rule there is we have to maintain one, no more than one foot ahead on the liner system. So we're constantly pumping that area so there's no leachate that could migrate down through our robust liner system. So that leachate collection system is our third layer of protection. And then our fourth layer of protection is a robust cover system. The standard cover system for non-T-Norm is a three-foot-thick layer. For T-Norm, we have this additional 24-inch low permeability soil layer that gives us five foot of protection. And beyond that, the T-Norm rules don't allow us to place any T-Norm waste within 10 feet of the final cover. So the upper five, the waste material, the upper five foot of that waste material would be non-T-Norm. So when we put this to bed at the end of life, oops, excuse me, at the end of life, T-Norm waste will not be within 10 feet of the final cover system. I would add too, with this liner and cover system, the rules require that we reject 98.5% of any rainwater coming into this envelope, if you will. Our modeling that we've done with HELP, which is a kind of an industry-standard modeling software for landfills, shows that this composite liner system in conjunction with the final cover system is 99.99% effective in not allowing infiltration through the bottom layer, bottom liner system. I think that's, that's all. Oh, one thing I did forget. I would say, as being a part of every phase of construction out here, as a part of the solid waste rules, there is also very rigorous construction QAQC procedures out here to assure that we build this correct. For instance, if you go back to that liner, we put this liner system in cell 1. I would say even in that volcanic tuff layer, we subcut an additional 36 inches, recompacted that tuff, 18 inches of it, and then another 18 inches of clay liner. So our clay liner layer in that volcanic tuff was 36 plus 18. It was, it was very robust. And as we did that, we had to survey, we took hundreds, maybe 1,000 survey shots documenting our thickness to verify that we truly got 36 inches. And on top of that, we did hundreds of soil tests. I think we did over 11 compaction tests to show that this clay liner was put per the spec. The landfill spec is 1 times 10 to the minus 7th centimeters per second. And the clay, the native clay in this area is very good for clay liner building. And our average of hundreds of tests was, you know, about 10 to the minus 8th centimeters per second. And after we do this rigorous construction CQA, we compile it in a report. We sign off as an engineer and we submit it to the DEQ for their review and approval, which they've done for the first two phases of construction.
And you do that because Bar Engineering has some skin in the game, really, right? From a liability perspective? Is that correct? I mean, you have to, I mean, you're doing your part in this whole thing because, and you want it built right, I assume, because you have some liability as a professional engineer.
Yeah, we, I mean, we need to certify that it's built. You know, the first phase is to put a permit design there. And then once we get to detailed design, we need to design it correctly to meet permit conditions. And then someone needs to sign off and say that it was built to the permit conditions and it meets the spec, so yes.
Or you're at risk of being sued. Is that correct?
You're absolutely right, Seth.
Right, no, where's Karen?
But yeah, we have, we have a professional reputation that we need to maintain. We've worked on landfills for decades since the technology first came out. I personally have worked on landfills for over 30 years. And I want to keep Wisco happy. I don't want anything for them to fail. So that, you know, that's personally, I feel personal responsibility to them and to any other landfill I'm working for. We do have professional liability. If something were to fail because of poor design, we would be sued for that. We'd be potentially liable. Because of the QAQC requirements and the DEQ rules, you're right, we have then responsibility to watch over the contractor's shoulder and make sure they're getting it built right. And, but there's, there is some shared responsibility once you get into, into construction as well. The contractor has liability as well. If it fails because of poor construction, they're liable. So there are, there are parties that can be held responsible.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was getting at.
I was, I was curious, when you, when you talk about when you, when you go to, when the cell is full and there's a 10-foot cover, how do you, how do you know when you're full? I mean, is it, do you return the cell back to original grade? Or is there, I mean, is it going to be a level, original grade finish? Or is there a mound or?
First of all, it's, it's not a 10-foot cover. It's only a five-foot cover. The five foot below it is non-T-Norm waste. So we have a 10, total 10-foot.
Right, but there's 10 feet over the T-Norm stuff. But I was just curious, is it, is the cell returned to original grade for elevation? Or is there a cap, you know, so it's mounted, so it sheds or?
Yep, yep. So as a part of that first phase of the permit design, we don't have, we showed the liner grades. We didn't show the final cover grades. But as we prepared this permit application, we prepared final cover grades, final waste grades that we need to abide by. And if we don't reach those grades that have been approved by the permit, it'd require a major permit modifications to adjust that. So those finish grades are set. And they're, this landfill is sloped at a four-to-one slope, the finish grades. Yep.
Question because it just happened. We had six inches of rain in some places. And you've got a leachate pond.
Yes.
How do you mitigate that risk of having a six-inch rainfall come all at once without overflowing your leachate?
Sure, sure. Well, we, we can say when we, when we designed that leachate pond originally, we designed it for back-to-back-to-back 100-year storm events. I forget what the storm size here, it might be three or four inches? Four. So that's incorporated into the design. Mitigating, mitigating the risk of any leachate or contact water runoff from the landfill is one of the important parts of landfill design. And there's pretty high storm standards to meet there to ensure that doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just add to that, that there's, there is a plan written into the permit application of the state that provides backup systems for leachate management as well. One mechanism is we might temporarily hold some leachate in the landfill until we can get it under control. But there are other disposal routes as well. And Wisco has done an excellent job. A couple of years ago, you had an extremely wet, what was it, September? And Wisco moved water from their leachate pond into their storage tanks that are on the north, oil storage tanks that are on the north side of the road. Again, temporarily with the approval of the DEQ to make sure that there wasn't any release. And, you know, if it is, if we are encroaching into what we call that freeboard zone at the top, then we also would haul that excess leachate away and, and put it into another permitted facility like an injection well where we can permanently dispose of it. So a lot of the material, T-Norm material that would go into Wisco's landfill is currently being managed at the treating facility that's on the north side of the road. They would like to start taking a lot of the material that meets criteria to put into the landfill instead of hauling it to another facility in Montana or Idaho or someplace else. And then the commercial loads, you know, just talking about traffic, the commercial loads, any additional traffic would come along in Highway 2. The facility manager, Kay Lammens, told me recently that they got some good news at the state. The DOT was actually out there looking at adding turn lanes to reduce traffic risk and reducing the speed limits in that stretch of the highway as well. They're also have, currently have in plans upgrades for their driveways to pave them, get cattle guards. And I heard the phrase, the terminology about the Williams County.
Trackout.
Trackout pads. So we'll look into that and make sure that we meet all the criteria there. So Louis, I think this is...
Looking at the previous concerns, public comments and stuff, there was concerns about monitoring radioactive waste.
Can you state your name for that?
Yep. Louis Vegan, Integrity Environmental. I'm a radiation consultant for Wisco. So the concerns were about monitoring the waste. You had questions about soils coming in, waste, piping, whatnot, equipment, impacted equipment. So Wisco is going to invest over $50,000 in monitoring equipment, not only, you know, requiring that incoming waste be sent for analytical prior to waste acceptance. So it just won't show up and say, hey, take this. We have to have it set up, a profile set up in advance. But public comment was, how are we going to ensure that the whole load is less than 50 picocuries? So we're going to be spending, you know, over $50,000 for incoming monitors that will track that and not just leave that to human error or any, you know, malfeasance that companies might try to put stuff in the center of it or any concerns of that. The monitoring will also ensure that trucks leaving the facility will be free of any T-Norm contamination throughout. So those will be documented, computers with that. Detection equipment, employee training, everything will be completed by an outside third party, being Integrity Environmental, to oversee that. Sampling frequency, like I said, every, every sound, every load will require to be, have a profile set up prior to showing up at Wisco's front door. And those things will be scrutinized prior to that to ensure everything's within DEQ limits. It's just a picture of a portal monitor. It shows that it'll monitor all sides of the truck as it comes in and as it comes right into the scale station. And then, as it goes out, it'll also be monitored to ensure no spread of T norm contamination. Excellent. Contaminated equipment, like we talked about, there is that level of one hundred micro Rankin on approval. This portal monitor will also be set to those standards to ensure it's not left to human error with someone walking around with a small handheld. It'll have to pass through that whole portal monitor to make sure all the equipment, every bit of it, there's no hotspots or anything that could be missed on that. Air monitoring will be conducted above the initial requirements. Initially, it was going to be quarterly. The air monitoring would be done for a week, but Wisco is committing to do it for the complete year, three hundred sixty-five days, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Those things will be documented. And air monitors will be placed on all four sides of the landfill to monitor radium two-two-six, two-two-eight, and radon with annual reports going to the Radiation Control Program, the DEQ.
Hello, I'm Lynn Thompson, Senior Civil Engineer with Bar Engineering, and I am the Project Manager on Wisco's groundwater monitoring program. So, basically, they are required as a landfill to complete twice-a-yearly groundwater monitoring. What that does is Seth talked extensively about the, the layers of protection. This is an added layer. Let's make sure those layers of protection that work, are, are working. So, twice a year, we go out and collect groundwater samples. We collect from five monitoring wells. One is up gradient, so that's just to tell us what the background levels are, what's naturally occurring in the area for our downstream. And then, we also sample the leachate pond. So, basically, with the up gradient well and the leachate pond, we compare those to the other four groundwater monitoring wells to, to make sure that there are, are no releases subsurface. We do, I think almost like eighty analytes we test for. We, twice a year, it's like eight coolers full of samples we ship off to the lab. You know, but T norm, it's radon, radium two-two-six and two-two-eight, and then uranium. And then, we also do TPH and benzene, other oil field products. So far, we haven't seen anything of concern at the landfill. I expect that to continue, but we do make sure. They also have their stormwater pollution prevention plan. They have an MPDS permit. That's for surface water. They do have to sample that annually. Sometimes it's hard. It's pretty dry out there. They get a lot of infiltration, so they can't always collect a sample because it goes away too quick. But that is part of their program, and they do have to do inspections for that as well. They also will be, have to inspect the roads for tracking. I know that's been a continuous concern, and I understand that. And they're taking, you know, measures to fix that, but they will have to inspect the roads for tracking. As part of that, Louis's company will be doing radioactivity levels of those roads to make sure there's no, you know, no tracking. And that's really easily, easily detected. And so, we'll have hard numbers on that. And then, if they are any problems, they will be committed to having to clean that up within twenty-four hours. And then, with all environmental permits, those records will be maintained for a minimum of three years. The groundwater monitoring results are maintained for the life of the landfill and post-closure. So, I can answer any specifics if you have. Oh, yeah, as we mentioned before, the DEQ rigorous inspections, Diana's, you know, group is out there a lot. They also have, they'll have their radioactive people will be out there. And then, the NDIC has some skin in the game on the north facility, so they get NDIC inspectors out there as well.
With regards to employee training, I'll be managing that myself, so the outside third party. I've conducted years of training. I have over twenty-two years of experience with radioactive materials from nuclear reactors in the Navy to medical waste. So, my experience is second to none out here. I'll assure that, you know, they all meet the requirements of annual training, annual refresher training. And just be on hand as a, as a resident of Williams County. I'm at their disposal. You know, if there are any drivers, any outside drivers need training, that's kind of what Wisco has me on retainer for, is to be available to that.
And just to wrap up, finally, I think this goes to some of the points of your questions that, that the state regulations do require financial assurance to be posted, which is accessible by the state if, if something happens somewhere along the way. Wisco's been here for over fifty years, and they want to, they want to keep working here for many years to come. But if something does happen and, and they have to abruptly end operations, the state has access to, well, if you add up the numbers, it's over three million dollars of, of funds to properly close the landfill and decontaminate any contaminated areas that might be encountered at the, at the end of, of, of an abrupt closure. You know, additionally, as I said, Wisco wants to do, be here for many years to come. It's only a part of their business. So, they, they don't have to rely only on the landfill to stay, stay in business, stay viable, and be able to back up that landfill. I think that's everything.
Anybody have any questions for the team at Wisco?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. What type of materials do you guys dispose of in that landfill?
Primarily special waste generated from either drilling or production and completions, basically. Three phases of oil and gas. I'd say about twenty-five percent is industrial, so you have a gas station cleanup or a, a truck rollover somewhere. I'd say twenty-five percent of our waste is non-oil field related.
And, I mean, is it just dirt? I mean, soil contaminated type stuff? Is there anything else?
I'd say primarily, you look at that landfill, and it's probably ninety percent soils, contaminated soils with various fuels or hydrocarbons, anything, anything generated from oil and gas or, say, a, a truck rollover.
Plastics, pit liners, I mean, general oil field garbage, waste?
Yeah, if it's associated with, with drilling or production, I know at the end of drilling pads, there usually is, is a, a heavy mill liner that does come with, along with thread protectors and various impacted plastics, I'd call them, stuff that you probably wouldn't want in your municipal landfill.
What consideration do you guys have in other landfills for materials like that blowing out and ending up in other areas?
Well, we do our best. Every day when we, we drive to work, you know, we try to pay attention to the ditches and the fences. And, you know, I personally have been out and, and picked up, you know, various things, whether they're associated with our landfill or not. We feel like, you know, we owe the community and the surrounding area, you know, to pick up. And, you know, we certainly don't want the pathway to our facility to look like, you know, something out of an Armageddon movie. So, you know, I'm not going to say that we're perfect and we haven't had anything leave our facility, but we, we sure do our best to monitor our surrounding areas and, and take appropriate action to, you know, mitigate anything that may have left our facility.
Do you have any fencing requirements that are associated with being in the landfill?
We do need to, I'm sorry, we do need to provide security for the landfill under DEQ rules, so we do have a fence around the facility to limit access to, only employees or approved, you know, truck drivers or visitors are allowed in. The, there is, there are regulations that prohibit blowing debris. And another, so those generally get kept caught on the, on the fence as well, generally, not always, but generally. There is also daily cover, soil cover placed over looser, more susceptible debris that might, might blow. So, I, I was just out at the landfill yesterday, and I could see there's, there is plastic sticking out of the, the side slope, but it all had cover over the top of it, soil cover. That's not going to allow that. That will keep that plastic in place.
I'm just going to ask that question for you, because I, in, in talking to Bo, he mentioned kiddie pools. I don't know what, right? Isn't that what blew into your pasture?
Well, they're coming from somewhere. I mean, I don't, that's, I guess I've been told that some certain locations use kiddie pools to test stuff. I mean, it's just odd that, I mean, there's no neighbors around me with small children, and there's probably about the fifth kiddie pool, I guess, we've had stuck in the fence. But.
I guess according to our profiled waste, we have, to my knowledge, we're yet to come across any, any sort of material like that. I mean, we've seen thread protectors, which are easily identifiable. The, the liners are quite massive, so they're easily identifiable. Our operations does pay very close attention to what comes in. If, if a random mattress happens to be thrown in off of a drilling location, it is noted, and I'm expected to make a phone call to the generator. So, anything that doesn't seem to line up with oil and gas definitely gets further scrutiny. So, I, I don't want to speculate, but I would guess that pool came from Baneville or Culbertson or, you know, somewhere other than our, our landfill, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
I, the question Barry asked was the total height of the facility when it's done. The answer that I got a while back was like fifty feet above grade. Is that about right when it's covered?
Well, yeah, I was, I was just curious if it went back to original grade, or is it going to be a hill or just a mound where it'll shed, or, you know?
Excuse me. Yeah, sorry, I have too many landfills in my brain here. The, the final height is two thousand three hundred and thirty-six feet. The, the road on the west side is about twenty-two sixty, so do the math there.
Your landfill road or the highway?
The, the landfill road.
Is that what, twenty-one?
Twenty-two sixty. So, about seventy, eighty feet.
Is that by design for runoff? So, you don't? Well, I mean, obviously, it's designed to take waste, and so it builds up. But, I mean, is that also a, a design consideration is runoff to?
Absolutely, for runoff once final cover, but it also reduces your footprint. You know, if we didn't go up, the footprint of landfill would be much bigger. So, we want to minimize footprint by building vertically.
Okay.
But that's already approved. I mean, that's going to happen whether we do this or not.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep. Yeah, that was permitted and approved and meets all the DEQ rules.
Any other questions that need answering? Thank you very much, and then we will allow public comments to follow.
Good morning, Chairman Kemp and Commissioners. I'm Jeff Simon. I'm Executive Director of the Western Dakota Energy Association. Our members are cities, counties, and school districts in the energy-producing region of the state. Williston, Williams County, and the Williston Public School District are all members of our association. When the commission enacted its moratorium in December 2019, we had conversations with a couple of you, most notably Commissioner Montgomery, and initiated a study of the situation to try to get kind of our arms around it on, on behalf of all of the oil-producing counties to, 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 you know, identify the scope of this issue, what we need to do about it. And, you know, in particular, to try to, you know, seek some sort of a regional cooperative solution. So, you know, we identified the fact that, on average, there's ninety-two thousand tons of this material produced annually. In the most recent year, 2020, with the downturn, that number's down to like thirty-five thousand tons. So, when you talk about a single landfill capped at twenty-five thousand tons, you know, there isn't that volume right now. So, when these companies talk about investing, you know, in the radioactive materials license, it's a pretty risky kind of proposition to, to determine whether or not you're going to make money in the end. So, I think we're actually fortunate to have two companies that are interested in it. We examined, you know, current disposal options. Most of it, most of the material, I think you're all aware, goes to Montana right now, to Lindsay, Montana, which is at least about a two, two-and-a-half hour drive from here, something like that. We took a look at all the permitted landfills in western North Dakota. There are thirteen of them within the oil-producing counties. And, you know, once we got kind of all that information together, we put together a working group. We had representatives from each of the four, the, the big four counties. Commissioner Montgomery was, was part of that. Commissioner Hanson was involved in some of that. And, you know, even, we went beyond that. We got Billings County engaged because we were thinking our, the R-three-sixty landfill south of Grassy Butte might be perhaps an option. So, Billings County became part of the conversation as well. DEQ was involved in that discussion. Department of Mineral Resources was involved in it. I mean, we took a, you know, a really kind of broad view, trying to figure out, you know, what might works, work best. We looked at the zoning ordinances of all four counties to think, you know, maybe we can standardize this, so at least wherever it happens, it, it's all treated consistently. And quite honestly, the, the four counties have very dissimilar ordinances. And, you know, in the end, our conclusion was, hey, the DEQ has administrative rules, let's, let's just embrace those rules. And I think, as you've heard from Diana and her explanation, they're, they're quite prescriptive and quite strict. They're among the strictest disposal sorts of regulations in the country. The, the bonding requirements, the financial assurance, that section of the administrative rules is eight pages long. So, I mean, there's, there's some pretty extensive regulations in place in the state. But, you know, through the, the course of those conversations, it became pretty apparent that among the four, the big four counties, there really wasn't much of an appetite for developing a regional landfill. And that, you know, bottom line, it, it requires a private sector solution. We got two private companies that are interested in, in providing that solution for the state. Our role since that time has been really, you know, one of public information, trying to, you know, prevent, provide some education to the public as to, you know, what it is. I think, as you've heard, it, we're talking about very, 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 very low levels of radioactivity, but just the term itself, you know, creates fear because we all know what, you know, nuclear explosions look like. This is nothing like that, obviously. We've got a very extensive section on our website devoted to this issue. You can read recent news articles. You can, you know, get the fact sheets that DEQ has on its website. We've prepared, you know, quite a bit of information. The political reality of this is that Montana is becoming a little bit more reluctant about, you know, more or less becoming the landfill for North Dakota. We are the number two producing, well, maybe number three now, number two producing state in the country for oil. And it's, it's really kind of a little surprising that there isn't a disposal facility in North Dakota. So, I think that's why we're here. We, we obviously need a North Dakota solution to this problem, and I think you have it in front of you. The, the fact of the matter is, you know, Williams County, I, I get, I get that from, you know, watching the activity that came in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. People would rather not have it here, but it is here now. I think it's, it's here. I mean, we're not going to be increasing traffic. We got, the two facilities are handling oil field waste now. They're just, you know, doing a little bit of processing and putting it on a truck, and then it goes somewhere else. So, in effect, we'd be reducing traffic, I think, if we permit a landfill here. With that, I, I guess I would stand for any questions if you have any. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Additional comments? Additional comments from the public on the Wisco application?
Good morning. My name is Janice Aronson. I also spoke at the Planning and Zoning. I guess my concern is that the oil impact has been obvious here in northwestern North Dakota. But all of the state of North Dakota has enjoyed the benefits of the oil activity. So I feel like this particular thing could be handled in another area of North Dakota so that we don't feel the impact of this landfill, of this radioactivity here. I have grandchildren here. My children are here. I'd like, you know, a little bit of normalcy here. And I just, I get tired of our area, I guess, having all of the impact of the oil and the rest of the state enjoying all the benefits. And this is one area that they could help us out with. So I'm, I'm really hoping you Commissioners will listen to your planning and zoning recommendation. The Commission worked very hard and listened to that and they made a recommendation to you and I hope you take heed to the recommendation and go with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Well, Marlene Sandager, I'm not close to the Wisco one, but you know, they came out probably a year and a half ago to test our water and we're gonna get right back to us and make sure to show us that there is no radioactivity. I have yet to hear from them. Not one word. We dug out there, we were out there in the pasture with them, they took samples, never got back to us. Not one word. So I'm thinking, we're probably already all full of radioactivity for Secure Energy. Well, anyway, first of all, born, raised, all my kids here. Would you guys like to move to a county that has radioactivity with your children from out of state? Not me. I'd go to Burley County. I'd go anywhere that did not say radioactivity dumps. So I don't think it's good for our county. I don't think it's good for our homes, our land. The oil field has been wonderful. I agree with Janice. And we've, we've worked hard to live around here with all the truck traffic and all the people working and all the new people in here. We've got new schools. We've got the rec center. Do we really want a radioactivity center? I don't think so. So I'm against it. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Marlene. Any other additional comments from the public? Anybody else want to get up and speak on for or against the Wisco application? Just want to make sure we give everybody an opportunity. We'll just give it a second here. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the Wisco application? Yes, Marlene? Yeah, 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 sorry. To be on the record.
I did have a question. Equipment that is radioactivity, has radioactivity on it? How about all the trucks that are driving around delivering the stuff in our county? Last, was a year ago, year and a half ago, somebody was up here and they had the trucks tested as they were going in and out. They were radioactivity. They had it on there. So these trucks are traveling on our road with all that.
They, they are today. They have to get it somewhere. And right now it's going to Montana, Colorado, Idaho, or anybody else that'll take our waste.
I bet some other counties here wouldn't want our waste either. Neither do we.
Well, while, while we're waiting, I guess, I got, just, just for perspective for the people out in the audience, that what Jeff mentioned, we're number two. Number one, number one state is Texas. And they allow thirty Pico carries, but then they just spread it on top of the ground. It's, yeah, so I mean, it's.
This is a little bit more extensive.
Right, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm Bob Leek with KT Enterprises and obviously you came out to see our site. We are a solution for T-Norm waste. We're a better solution for T-Norm waste. It's over a mile underneath the ground. It's not sitting in a pasture. It's not sitting in somebody's backyard. Our blueprint is a lot smaller. We're no bigger than basically a pad with a pumping unit and tank batteries on it. And so if something ever happened to KT, you know, the oil field's up and down, businesses come and go. We seen it in the last with the COVID-nineteen. If something were to ever happen to KT, we're not planning on going anywhere. We're a very strong business. But if something were to happen, there'd be hardly any management for the county to be able to deal with the waste that was left behind because there would be no waste left behind. There'd be a few buildings that would have to be dealt with. That's it. And we can take all the impacted soils. And now, there's a lot of discussion on like filter socks and different big equipment that could possibly, you know, be brought to a landfill. I made a few phone calls and right now, North Dakota has ways to deconning that and getting rid of the waste, the radioactive waste on that material. And that stuff can be reused or recycled. It doesn't have to go into a landfill. I mean, now there are certain things like tank batteries that would have to be taken out. But very small and very infrequent, the, the answer I got was very infrequent would that ever happen. So occasionally, you might have to take a tank battery to Montana. But it really, do we want to have two landfills or one landfill taking all this stuff for something that really isn't needed? Another thing, our technology is way better. I mean, I'm not saying that we're the only thing and that you guys should decide between one business or another. But how about this? How about if Secure or Wisco wants to get rid of T-Norm waste, why don't they do a slurry injection well? Why don't they offer that to Williams County? It's a better solution. It's better for the community. You wouldn't have people come up here worrying about what's gonna happen in their backyard. So all in all, we're a better solution. All in all, we're more, we're gonna be your environmental. Let me think about it. If Secure and Wisco were concerned about the environment, it wouldn't be in the landfill. They'd look at better technology. Look at something that's more scientifically sound for getting rid of T-Norm waste. So we're better. That's the truth. So I mean, yeah, let's look at possibilities or solutions for Williams County, but let's look at the, at the right ones, not this.
Thank you. I, you can ask any question you want, yeah.
So I'm glad you brought up this. I was gonna ask Mr. Simon, Jeff Simon, about has an energy association basically talked to the legislature or sought out studies or looking for funding for technologies to dispose of all of this waste other than landfills?
Commissioner Anderson, to answer your question, we did have, I didn't mention, I guess, when I was up here before, we did have legislators engaged in the conversation with us. Representative Richter, who's in the audience today, was part of that conversation. Senator Patton from Watford City has been part of the discussion. And the legislature had an interim discussion about it. You know, the, the fact of the matter is, there is no technological solution to this. It's, it's material that we just, you know, we have to deal with it somehow. And landfill or slurry well or, you know, whatever. I mean, I don't know if that answers your question, I guess, where you're, where you're going with that, sir, but.
No, I mean, my point is, I mean, there's research institutions all over this country and if, I mean, I, my main knowledge is agriculture. So over the last hundred years, if there was zero innovation in agriculture, we would still be running moldboard plows and letting this country blow away. I mean, we do the best we can with the tools that we have acquired and then the research continues so that they can continue on and give us better technology. So I mean, my, my question, short of being blunt, is in twenty-twenty-one, the best solution for all of this waste is to put it into a landfill that becomes seventy to eighty feet above elevation at the end. So has anybody sought out any additional technologies that improves the waste disposal of these products?
Well, I, I think the slurry well is, is, you know, probably part of that solution, but, I mean, the fact of the matter is, you know, if you do the math, when Keith Norbeck was at the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think Keith's here today and he can probably address this too, but you know, the fact of the matter is it's a much larger problem than a slurry well or even fifty slurry wells. I think the, the testimony he presented, they had injected nine thousand barrels of slurry. And each gallon of slurry contains roughly twenty percent material or about two pounds per gallon. So I mean, if you, you do the math on that, that's about four hundred pounds of T-Norm. And we're talking about, you know, tons. Nine, ninety thousand tons per year, something like that. So I don't know if that answers your que, I, I don't know that there is an alternative. I really don't. You know, there are others here that maybe could address that, Commissioner, but.
Well, I would like to stress that it's time for people to get on board with finding the people to look at technologies because, I mean, I, I'm ashamed that we have these disposals that are just gonna be enormous hills of oil field waste. I mean, if that's, obviously that's what we have to deal with because we got them. And you talk about some of these studies that are going ten thousand years from now, they hope that there won't be any water leakage. Well, the good part is none of us will be here ten thousand years from now. But somebody will be, so I'm hoping that whoever's got the science is right.
Part of the closure requirements are just like, you know, they would be for a coal mine. I mean, there are reclamation standards so that this stuff, once, you know, once the landfill is closed, it's, you know, revegetated and, and, you know, five, ten years later, it looks like a natural part of the surrounding. But, and, and it's, you know, ten feet of cover on it. This, there is nothing emitted from that, as you heard from Kurt Rea there, that the particles just don't travel that far. It's, Dave Glott, in his testimony before the Planning and Zoning Commission, said you could, you can put a house on it. You can put a farmstead on it with no risk to the person. So you can build on top of a landfill.
Actually, you probably could, but it's seventy-five feet tall. You know, I just, I'm.
The wind would be something else, wouldn't it?
Well, I, I just don't understand why they're not brought, brought back to original grade because, you know, I mean, I, I get the point about the smaller footprint. But it goes both directions. I mean, if, if it was bigger, round and flat, where you could graze it or you could do something productive with it rather than hope it don't erode and wash off. Because I don't, I don't know how you're gonna get vegetation to grow to hold that ten feet of cover on it when it's seventy-five feet tall. Look at the hills. I mean, that, that's what Mother Nature does to it. You know, it, I just don't quite understand what the, the theory behind that being safer, but.
Maybe Seth or Paul can answer that one. They're the engineers here, so.
Right, yeah. I mean, I wasn't, you know, don't, I'm not trying to chew you out or nothing. I just, I just don't get why it wouldn't be brought back to original grade. You know, like you were talking about the coal mines, the coal, when, when they mine it and when they get done, the, the farmland is actually better. I mean, they'll, they'll, it's, it's productive land. You know, I, I don't see why we want to run around making hills, but.
I don't, I guess I don't know that it'd be a dome. I think they, you know, try, tried to achieve natural contours that.
Well, you said it was four to one. So that's, you know, that's back slope on the road ditch, you know.
The, the, I, I, let's regain some focus here. The, the, the landfills are permitted already. So that, we, we're not, unfortunately, that's not something we can address at this meeting. That's already been approved. That, that, that ship has sailed. So I.
One question.
It's, it's a legitimate question and I appreciate the discussion on it, but I, it's not what we're here to figure out.
So you don't know of any other, is there any other disposals in other counties that are built that could apply for this, like in McKenzie, Dunn, the other counties in this association?
There are, yeah. Our, our studies show there are thirteen existing landfills that could accommodate this. And two of them are here in Williams County. There are thirteen in the oil producing counties. But, you know, to this point, there hasn't been interest among the operators of those landfills. I do have a hunch that if one or both of these is improved, approved and, you know, the, the market is there, I, I expect you would see additional landfills. You know, just because of the transportation costs. I mean, the industry is trucking this material here now at, you know, considerable expense. And if there's a cheaper alternative, I mean, this is a, this is a market we're talking about. There are perhaps competitive or competitors that, that would surface. So we'll, I guess only time would tell.
What I'm, one of the concerns that I, I think Commissioner Montgomery brought up originally is we don't want to be the one county to be everybody's dumping ground. What I'm encouraged by is you got KT Enterprises in the largest, is the single largest oil producing county in the United States of America, which is McKenzie County. And so what I appreciate is that they have addressed this need in the single largest oil producing county in the United States of America. Again, that's huge. What makes me happy is we wouldn't be the first if this did get approved. And, and that the need in, which is obviously much larger in McKenzie County than anywhere else, is, is being addressed by a business that's, that's active and working and running right now.
Yeah, I believe I misspoke earlier when I, I said that disposal well has injected four hundred tons, not four hundred pounds. I think I said that wrong earlier.
Okay.
Anyway.
Correction noted.
On the, and this might be more for Bob with KT. Who, who approved your permit? I don't, it didn't go through, it didn't go through the McKenzie County Commission, did it? That came, this came from the state?
Keith Norbeck, KT Enterprises. I'll answer that question and make one more clarification as well. So our permit was through the Industrial Commission, primarily for injection control through the UIC program. And then we do have a DEQ license, a radioactive material license as well for it, that went through that organization. The only thing that went through the county would have been for an approach permit. That, it was just a clarification. We were actually on private roads. We didn't need that. And so there was no zoning oversight related to that facility. So, and then going back to the volumes, we've, we've been operating for almost a month and a half, two months now. And we have injected a little over four hundred tons is what we have at to date. And to give this into perspective on technology to your comment is, this is a technology that people utilize around the world and we can handle large volumes. We're just in the first inning in this state, trying it in a new area. And, I mean, we're, you know, a new company as well. And so just to process, you know, all businesses go through evolution, right? People process and technology and we're, you know, advancing every day and being able to move more throughput. And so when I look at slurry wells, I, I, you know, look at the state problem and it's, you know, been diminished, you know, just that, let's, you know, talk about T-Norm specifically. You know, our one well at these levels, we could handle a hundred percent of that volume down our well. I confidently believe that based off the modeling. Geographic, you know, logistics dominates some of these decisions in the oil and gas industry often. And so I do think that there's a multi-well solution to try to make sure that the waste channels into the correct facilities instead of ones that would route it to a landfill. So that's the only minor comment I would make, but we're, you know, the only other thing would be about, you know, debris is one of the things that come up occasionally. You know, Amazon started selling books is the best way that I would say it. In Amazon, everybody gets all kinds of things from Amazon today, you know, all kinds of products. I mean, my wife gets a package, I think, every day. We, you know, we started out, we had, you know, identified this as a problem. And, you know, we stepped up and said, hey, we want to be part of the solution for the state. And the first part of that problem was making sure that we can get the waste down the hole. We're in month two on that process. We feel very good about it, but we didn't start out saying, let's decon. Let's, let's figure out a way to handle filter socks. There's solutions that exist. There's technologies that are available down the road. Those may be economical. I, you know, we haven't evaluated them. We started, let's make sure the waste goes down the well. So I guess if you guys have any other questions for me.
How much, so if you have a barrel of water, how, how much, how much can you hold in that? How, how much can you suspend in, into, into a barrel to, to pump down hole?
So we are pumping twenty percent solids is what our, our ratio is. On a frac job, if you went out and watched one, I mean, they've pumped up to six pounds per gallon. We're pumping at about two pounds per gallon. And so you can be as high as. And so you can be as high as forty percent. We pump at a low concentration from a risk.
You, you don't wanna run at, you know, twelve thousand pounds either, so.
No, no, exactly. It's a risk mitigation thing for us to make sure that we can continue to pump and move that waste away from the wellbore, so. And, and then the only other thing to add to that is, is that so far on our, the reason the volume flow, it's based off of demand. We're currently only running eight hours a day, you know, processing. So, you know, as oil companies continue to improve our facility, you know, we could see that substantially increase. And so I would say that slurry fracture injection well, this is my estimate, is that it could handle ninety to ninety-five percent of the waste that's generated a day with the two-well solution, so.
How, how long has this been going? I, the reason that, I guess where I get the question from is, um, you know, you hear about fracs that happened and one well communicates with another well. And I'm, I guess I'm wondering how long you've been doing this to make sure that it doesn't communicate with the water table at another well?
That's a great question. We've, we've been injecting, so we, we had a, it, our permit process was long, it took a long time. We, um, we worked with the Industrial Commission on modeling and showing them what we were ultimately, you know, planning on for a year before we even stuck it on the docket. And at that time, so, you know, that's all public information, people could look at it. And, um, you know, we, we showed, we're injecting into the Middle Louisa Formation there in McKenzie County. We have salt layers above us. Those giant salt layers are impermeable. It's, it's as close as you'd ever get to somebody ever saying impossible when we talk about, you know, ten million years or something like that. I mean, this would be, we'd have to have the earth fault and bring it to the surface. I mean, I don't know if that would ever happen. I mean, it's impossible. And so, um, the impacts to the water table, the only way that it could happen at all is if we had a breach in our tubing, a breach in our casing, and then a breach in our service casings. We have three things, a pipe, two of them with cement behind them. It's, and we have, you know, we've MITed the well to a very high pressure, well above our injection, to make sure that if we ever had a tubing failure, that it wouldn't, wouldn't get there. So it's, it's very thought out, um, it's very technical. We have continuous analytical being done and looking back at the data to make sure that our waste is being placed where we thought it was gonna be. And so it's not, it's not just a pump and pray. We're, we're literally, we're watching it like a hawk every day. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Keith.
I just wanna bring up one other thing. Um, I, I hear the landfill is talking about clean air. And so they have the monitors to make sure that nothing comes out of the landfill. I mean, what did we just deal with here in North Dakota not that long ago? A big storm and tornadoes. I mean, so what happens honestly if a tornado were to hit a landfill? What's gonna happen to that T-Norm? It's just gonna be all over people's land. I mean, there's just no mitigating that. It's, it's a risk. It's a possible risk that could happen at any of these landfills. It's a risk that cannot happen at KT Enterprises. It's in the ground, so.
If you have ten trucks, if you have ten trucks come in, how fast can you get that down hole?
Keith can answer the technical side.
Well, I'd say, I mean, it's a legitimate question because I, 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 I'm not arguing that it's, it's a good technology, but do we have a pile of this sitting there waiting to be slurried to then put downhill, downhole?
Yes, and so, great question. So the vast majority of this T-Norm that's flowing around is flowing around in a wet state. And it, it goes to the current TRDs that exist and is dried. And so the majority of the waste that we receive goes directly into an offload and directly into a tank. And so it's contained. We have received some dry loads and those get stored on our pad. If you could see the size of our pad, it's like, I mean, sixty by forty feet is roughly the dimensions. And so we had a pile there for, I don't know, two weeks or something like that. But, I mean, it would have been two side dump loads is what was physically present. And so the point is, is that if this tornado hit our site, I mean, we got, you know, five hundred thousand pound tanks that would have to tip over to cause a spill or it's less than two loads sitting on a pad type of a thing, so.
Understood, and I think one thing to point out, Keith, it's, in a, in a, if we wanna get specific into a tornado environment, it's not the tanks that are gonna tip over. It's the two-by-four that's gonna be flying at a hundred and fifty miles an hour that hits the side of a tank and punctures it. That's gonna be the issue.
Correct, correct. And then we have containment and all kinds of stuff. And so the answer, going back to how quickly can we move product? You know, we, we can inject at about fifteen barrels a minute with our facility. You know, the peak that, when I look back at regulatory data flowing into TRDs, you know, that I've seen is people will bring in about eighteen hundred on like the high side. And so, I mean, I can get rid of stuff in hours and a day compared to having it sit there. The dry stuff is the one thing that we're working on improving our throughput so we don't build that up on. But that's just part of working through our technology. So hope to have that to where it doesn't sit around for more than even a day, so.
Thank you. I'm more just trying to, you know.
The, um, just as a reminder and to keep focus, we have, we all may have a personal belief in, in one technology or one solution over another. Unfortunately, we're not here to determine who, who, the free market will determine who wins this game of, of what works best and what, where, where the industry wants to go with it. Uh, we, a- a- as soon as government tries to get in the way of the free market and deciding winners and losers in a, in a business game, that's where we all lose and we may as well give up. That's my perspective. Anyway, that's, uh, any other comments, questions? We wanna give this fair and ample opportunity for people to express their comments and interest and, and concerns. Not to say that it hasn't been given that opportunity, but we are gonna make darn sure that everybody gets that opportunity here.
So I'm Billy Martinez. I actually work at Secure as one of their landfill operators. Uh, just to address a couple of things I heard, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but the trucks that haul the T-Norms in and out, they use this Oaks, their landfill in Montana uses the same trucks every time. We scan those when they come into our facility to pick up norms, and I've never actually had one scanned that came in hot. They don't come in radioactive. The material doesn't cause the truck to become radioactive. If they scan radioactive, it's because there's material in the truck carrying it. And as for the cover, the T-Norm isn't just sitting out when we dispose of it at the landfill. The plan is actually to put a non-T-Norm contaminated material over the top of it, and that's gonna be done every day. As far as the safety concerns from our plans. As far as the general whether the permit should be good for Secure or WizCo or anyone, only I'd say that competition's good for free markets. And I wouldn't, you know, I'm just as in support of WizCo and Secure getting a permit as I am one or the, over the other cause stifling competition is gonna end, will lead to us having more problems. KT well ends up failing in three months, we don't have anywhere else to put it now. I'm not saying it will. Texas runs both solutions. They have injection slurry wells, but they also have landfills and then they have ground spread, which I'm not saying we should do here.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Ken.
Um, Ken, I, I got a question for Kurt, for, um, I think we probably, I think I probably asked you this before, but when you, when you take your readings at the fence at a facility, have you ever went to a local municipal landfill and took readings there also?
I've been up to the city of Williston before with Brad Sepka back in the day. I'm starting to date myself here. I, I have, I can't remember actually taking readings at a landfill. I can tell you, a- as I've seen here in, in other facilities, lots of times I see much, much higher levels of radioactivity in the basement of buildings than I do out in the marketplace, including last week here, you were reading at fourteen micro Rankin per hour here in the basement. And if I go out to Secure's, uh, full-service terminal or TRD up a thirteen-mile corner, our background readings on the pad there are about seven micro Rankin per hour. So it's about twice as hot here in the building as it is.
Well, the reason I was asking is cause of the, the, you know, the, the coffee grounds, the, you know, blah, blah, whatever. That wouldn't be allowed in there, but you can put them in a, in a municipal landfill. And so I was just curious as to what, what an average background would be at, at a city dump.
You probably would see it to be similar because at the end of the day, your natural background is the pervasive thing, right? So unless you are actually putting a probe right on a source on contact, again, we're not talking about high levels of radiation here, so even the gamma radiation doesn't propagate very far. If, if we had a significant source that was truly radioactive, a nuclear trigger or some kind of source debris from the Chernobyl explosion, I mean, these are things where the gamma emissions might travel up to a mile. But every, every day, all the time, I go out to these sites, they'll have five thousand micro Rankin per hour in the bottom of these tanks, uh, north of Williston here. And when I'm, when I'm five feet away walking by with a probe, I can't get higher than twenty micro Rankin per hour because it just doesn't propagate very far.
Any other comments, questions? Do either one of our representatives wanna speak on behalf? I believe there were some emails sent out. If, if you'd like to speak publicly, please feel free to do so.
Thank you. I, I really wasn't planning on it, but I'll just say a few words. I'm David Richter, Representative District One. As Jeff mentioned, we had a study group with the legislature during the last interim that looked at T-Norm and the issue of the landfills. Primarily, the, the motivation was Montana was looking at restricting North Dakota deposits into Montana, which would have left North Dakota in a pretty tough situation. In, in my opinion, and what I took out of that study commission, is that the best solution for North Dakota, it's our waste. We need to figure out how to dispose of it. The best solution might be a combination of different things. The landfill, the slurry wells, to take things that are, excuse me, more than the fifty Pico carries into the slurry wells. And then there's still gonna be waste that neither one of those facilities are gonna be able to handle in North Dakota. So we're still gonna be sending stuff to Colorado, Utah, the states that will accept that very high, high level of, of, uh, radiation. So, God, I'm nervous in front of you guys. So, um, what, what we're looking at from the statewide, there was, there was discussion about if we were gonna do anything legislatively or if we wanted to make any changes. And once Montana said, we'll go pretty, pretty much the same way as North Dakota does. And then the idea is that, okay, there's gonna be some landfills put out there, there's gonna be some slurry wells looking to get permitted. We felt that, let's just let it go. What we have in North Dakota for regulations are, are some of the toughest that you're gonna find anywhere in the nation. And if, if somebody comes and asks you for a permit, then that's a local decision on whether or not you guys want to, if they meet all the requirements, if the location is, is good for you, if it's good for the area, let the locals make that decisions based on what those landfills can present to you guys as solutions to this situation, so. I don't know that anything going forward, and I'm not saying that, that I know everything about what people in the western part of the state legislators are thinking in that manner, but going forward, if there's, I don't see any changes coming to legislation or anything at the state level. I know one thing, we don't want to take over the permitting process of landfills at the state level. I don't want that to happen. And if, if there's any suggestions coming out, I think there will be quite a lot of opposition to it. Leave that to the local level, leave that to the counties, the townships to make those decisions, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
I, I do have one. Mr. Richter, has there been any discussion at the state level of funding research or funding studies for other processes other than solid waste landfill?
Not that I'm aware of, but what, what I've seen legislatively is that the oil industry has done a really nice job of being innovative in and of itself. And I don't think that the, the state needs to go there because the industry right now is so strong at doing it. And, um, w- w- we kinda stay out of their way. And a lot of the innovations, and you see how, how much more efficient everything is going now in the oil. And that's because of the industry doing it. And I think if there's a, a solution coming forward, I think the industry is probably the best place to, um, come up with those solutions. Right now, um, in this last session, there was so much emphasis on coal, there was very little, because of the situation with coal in North Dakota, there was very little about helping out in the oil industry, which was kind of a tragic thing. But the legacy fund and, and the coal situation kinda sucked the air out of the room.
Thank you. Kurt, we got Representative Haddelsted, he'd like to speak.
Pat Haddelsted, representing District One in the legislature. Nice thing about following Richter, all you have to do basically is say ditto. Now, I have great respect for your willingness to take on this challenge. Representative Richter emphasized the importance of the local decision-making. And so that's the responsibility that you assume. We're very fortunate that we have an excellent state agency with the environmental quality who has no stake in the game other than to provide you with the best possible information. And I think the industry, knowing that it has an issue and is trying to deal with it, is providing information and maybe some financial support for research that's, that's taking place. So a difficult decision. I like the idea that we have multiple choices, that we don't put all our eggs in one basket. But you gentlemen have a big burden on your shoulders to try and do what's right. Fortunately, you've done a lot of background study, which is impressive. You have a great staff that provides you with good information. And then you get to sit down and digest all of that information. So kudos to you for being willing to take on the task. It's, uh, not always an interesting situation to have a target on your back. But people definitely know who you are and, and will express. And I think it's important, and I compliment all of the individuals that have come up that have, in a sense, put their neck on the line by speaking how they feel. And then the responsibility is yours. But the industry is very innovative. The gentleman from Watford City with the slurry well, some really good ideas. We're fortunate nationwide that we can, uh, build off other people's experiences. So we have a great task, a burden, if you will, to make that decision. But I like a variety of options, so. Thank you, gentlemen. Question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, again, we're gonna be patient through this process and hear everybody out. Anybody else have anything to say? The one thing I will just comment on, uh, local politics is very close to the people who either elect you or don't elect you. I grew up hanging out in Marlene Sandacre's house on Main Street. And then later on, you know, she lived right across the street from me. I've got, uh, you know, her daughters are classmates of mine and one a year younger, and then several that are much younger. So it, it's tough to make these decisions. It's, 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 uh, it's, it's not easy. It's, 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 uh, it's, it's not easy. Yeah, and I'm just, um, I'm not looking for empathy, but I'm just understanding from people that this is a, uh, it's no joke for any one of us up here. We all know people that are, you know, Bo lives right next to one of these facilities. And so it's, uh, it's no joke. It's a, it's a serious, serious thing to, to consider. Kurt, you had wanted to talk.
I was just gonna, uh, one thing, uh, Bo, specifically to your comment, because it's a valid one. Secure Energy has spent the last 10, 15 years refining its technology in terms of recycling and treating and recovering oil field constituents. So each of the three facilities were built at a cost of approximately $30 million. Uh, they contain very, very sophisticated equipment that's designed specifically to separate production water from crude oil and from the remaining solids. And it only makes sense, uh, for everybody's, uh, concern to recover and squeeze every drop of oil out of any waste streams, recover that, market it, and put it into productive use. Uh, inject the production water right on site at these TRDs. And then what's left is just a small amount of solid residuals. And, and so the objective from a secure standpoint is to, to minimize the amount of waste that we have to deal with. And, and that's exactly the objective. And they've spent, you know, $120 million in the state to do that.
Okay. Again, the, the reason we're here is to decide, based on planning and zoning requirements, uh, what should be accepted and what should not be accepted. And so that, that is our, our endgame. Any other comments and questions? Any, anything from the audience?
I, just, Mr. Chairman, quickly, I just want folks to know that, I mean, the co- the in favor comments that I've received for either of these, you know, for the most part have come from industry and of the like, and the against have come from neighbors like, uh, that are neighbors to me or neighbors to Secure. So I just want you to know that as a, my job is to try and weigh, weigh those comments and weigh the for and against. And, you know, sometimes I do take great offense to receiving emails and letters from, from folks in Bismarck that are 280 miles away. So it does mean a lot to get, uh, phone calls and emails and letters from neighbors that have their concerns. So, uh, that's just my little two cents.
Okay. Any additional comments? Anything from staff, uh, to add to this? No matter what gets decided today, it does have, uh, another round of regulatory perspective that has to be put upon it. So, um, regardless if this is approved or not approved, uh, if it's not approved, it stops. But if it, if it is approved, it does have to, uh, run the rigor of, uh, the DEQ. And, uh, future potential public hearings, and so that people don't have to feel as though they don't have a voice even no matter what happens here today, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's also important to point out that if these do get approved, uh, the comments have been made numerous times of Williams County being a dumping ground. Uh, I think it's important to point out to not only the board but the public, but Williams County as a home rule charter county, has the option, this board has the option to adopt an ordinance to limit the number of these facilities that will be allowed in Williams County. So that we don't have eight, 10, or whatever in Williams County. And I believe Karen, where are you? Uh, I've had that discussion with Karen, and I believe she's drafting up a ordinance to that effect if, to present to this board if it does pass.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Montgomery. The, um, the one other comment that I would say is that, uh, you know, we had a slowdown, obviously, with the, with the pandemic, and, uh, the, the lowest amount of waste being taken out of state was about 35,000 tons? Is that correct? Okay. Uh, with the price of oil moving in the direction it is moving, I anticipate that volume will certainly go up. Where, well, what do we have for production right now? 1.1 million barrels, 1.15? Something around that? And we were as high as 1.4 something? Okay. So I would anticipate we'll get back to where we were at some point. And then likely exceed it if the price of oil continues to move north, which only means more waste, uh, to, to be dealt with. Uh, which from the businesses that are here representing people that are doing the disposal would be advantageous for them, obviously, from a business perspective. But nobody can predict what's going to happen in the oil field, as we all know. It's up and it's down. Okay. Well, what are the wishes of this board? If there are no other comments, no other questions? Again, we are here to evaluate and, and leverage the information provided by staff. Uh, we have seven criteria that, uh, have been outlined and commented on by our staff. Uh, let's make sure we leverage their expertise, knowledge gained, and, and understanding of this in, in our proceedings.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I would make the motion that we follow planning and zoning recommendation of denial of this permit.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I would second for discussion.
Okay, we have a second, and...
Make point that, you know, when we were talking about the local, the local gov- you know, that we don't want the state running it because we want to maintain local governance. And the, the township did vote to deny. So that, that was, that was my theor- reasoning behind the second there anyway, so.
Can you answer a question for me, Mr. Brandberg? The township voted deny. What was the vote at the township level and what was the reason for denying it?
So the township chair, Ms. Shillo, provided that the recommendation was denial, but they never filled out a township form, so we didn't receive comment associated with their recommendation. And, um, from my understanding, it was two to one.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Beth will call vote.
David?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
No.
Steve?
No.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Mr. Chairman, we've, uh, in the last 18 months or so, have been provided a lot of information, a lot of facts, and had a lot of questions answered from staff, from the state, from the industry, and from ourselves. And, uh, I, I guess, I think it's time that we have some trust and we have some faith in the system, uh, with the reinformation that the state has provided us, with the information that the industry has provided us, and, uh, move forward. So having said that, I am going to make a motion, uh, to, uh, approve the request for a conditional use permit amended, amendment to include T-NORM waste disposal at the existing special waste landfill for Wisco, uh, to, and include the, uh, the comments and suggestions from the planning, uh, staff.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to add one more thing. Mr., uh, Mr. Amber, you mentioned, uh, if I, if I may, that, uh, we all want local control. And, and I firmly believe that, I always have. And that's one of my concerns with this issue. Mr. Richter stood up and said about the state, you know, the state's watching this. I think they're very concerned about it also, but I tend to believe that if something doesn't happen with one of the counties, to dispose of the waste that we produce, that the state will make a decision for us, and they'll take that local control away from us.
I, I would, I would agree with that. And, and we, we're going to have, even if, even if we just, you know, like, nope, ain't nothing going to be, happen but slurry wells, there's still stuff that, I mean, you can't pump line heaters down hole. I mean, we, we're going to have to have someplace to put the, the hard stuff. So, um, I, I would agree with that statement, David.
And I have a tendency to believe that the cream always rises to the top. So as, as these businesses compete in a free market, uh, if the slurry well is the answer, it's going to make itself the answer, and, and the technology is going to prove itself out. And, uh, and I appreciate the, the knowledge and the understanding that KT has, and, and appreciate everything they're doing, uh, in the number one producing, oil-producing county in the United States, so, um, I think there's a lot of opportunity out there for them to, to do well. Any other discussion?
Well, just to, you know, for, for, if you're trying to figure out exactly which way I'm leaning, I, 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 I voted in favor of the, uh, Secure's one just simply because the township did approve. And the, that, that's, that's what I was just basing off of. I, I know we need one. I mean, there's not a question in my mind, we're going to need more than one, so.
Okay. Appreciate that, Barry. Any additional discussion?
Well, I appreciate the comments. My, I guess where I'm hung up is that there's a lot of reaction to all this. I mean, if the state is, would react to a no vote based on force, to force us, then shame on them. Also, if the, if the gov- if our governments are based on reaction instead of being proactive, then it's time for change. It's time for folks to be proactive and be leading, leading people to, uh, find change and find and, uh, do technology and increase things and do it better. So I would still urge a no vote, and, but that's my opinion.
Thank you, Bo.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing before we do the vote. Um, I, I want to thank staff because, uh, kind of where it put me, I went through the CUP evaluation criteria. Once again, the questions that I had were answered. And, you know, um, some of these things, it was, it was kind of irrelevant because the landfill's there, and it's already been approved to be there. The safety concern has been addressed. I, I believe Diana's going to do a good job from DEQ, and, and they're going to take care of it, so, um, not an easy decision, a real hard one.
Could not agree more. Okay. Any additional? Okay. Any additional discussion? Again, we take this very seriously. This is a, this is a difficult topic. Okay. Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Barry?
No.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
No.
David?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Uh, we will move on to number five, I believe. Sam?
Number five is LU dash 0073 dash 21. This is a request coming from Williams County Planning and Zoning Staff for a zone change to heavy industrial for the 103 acre parcel that we were just discussing. Currently, this is zoned industrial, which is a relic of our, um, 1989 zoning ordinance. So we are attempting throughout the county to update these parcels to, uh, the most, the closest equivalent zoning district. And we've determined that heavy industrial is just that. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item and recommended unanimous approval of the item with the following condition, adherence to the Williams County zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
I would move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Cory?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Next up.
Next on the agenda is LU dash 0068 dash 21. Secure Energy Services USA LLC is requesting a conditional use permit amendment to include T-NORM waste disposal at an existing special waste landfill for 160 acre parcel. This property is currently zoned heavy industrial. As we just went through, in December of 2019, your commission placed moratorium on all pending and future zoning applications and permits for T-NORM facilities for disposal of T-NORM in Williams County. The purpose of this moratorium was to gather more information. The applicant did submit an application after the expiration of this moratorium, and that is what you see in front of you today. As I did with Wisco's application, I will go through the CUP evaluation criteria since this criteria is now placed upon this existing facility. So number one, the use complies with all applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, or a variance has been granted. Staff comment. The amendment to the applicant's conditional use permit is an appropriate request for this zoning district. This property is located within a heavy industrial zoning district where industrial waste sites are permitted. The addition of T-NORM is not altering the footprint of the site as it will be in addition to existing cells on the facility. Number two, the use complies with the applicable development standards and performance standards of this ordinance. Staff comment. This facility is existing and is secured by a fence around the entire facility. Number three, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Staff comment. The open storage of material, including waste products, is prohibited within 300 feet of any residence. All materials must be stored in accordance with state law in such a way as to provide access to fire and other emergency service providers. Number four, the use will not impede the normal or orderly development or impair or diminish the value of enjoyment of other property within the district. Staff comment. There are no other industrial uses in this area. This property is outside of the employment areas laid out in the county comprehensive plan. The zone change was approved in 2012 along with the conditional use permit to operate the special waste landfill. It was updated to heavy industrial in 2020 by staff to come into compliance with our 2015 zoning ordinance. The disposal of T-NORM to the facility will increase truck traffic by 2.5 trucks per day on average, and that is an estimate that was provided to us by the applicant. Number five, the physical conditions of the site, including topography, drainage, size, and shape are suitable- and shape are suitable for the proposed development. Staff comment: The original CUP was granted in 2012 with approval of a stormwater management plan. The addition of T-NORM will not alter the footprint of the site, so water board approval was not deemed necessary. If they are to change the footprint of the site from the original plan, they will have to obtain water board approval. And just a side note, Secure did come back for a CUP amendment when they added an additional Lee Cheepon, that was in 2020. So only to say that they are keeping us updated regularly if they are changing the overall master plan for the site. Number six, adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary site improvements have been provided or will be provided prior to the conditional use being initiated. Staff comment: The facility is accessed off of 66th Street Northwest, which is a section line and township road. Per the applicant, Secure maintains the road. Montreal Williams Electric Cooperative provides electricity to the site and fresh water is trucked in and a septic tank is pumped regularly. Number seven, adequate measures have been taken or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion, road dust, and impacts to adjoining properties. Staff comment: The access road is well-maintained. Secure stated that they maintain all of 66th Street Northwest. A member of the township board noted that the road was in good condition. Staff reached out to the township board to gather input on that street and its condition. Staff cannot find record of a recorded maintenance agreement. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on June 17th to review this item. The commission voted to recommend denial by a vote of seven to two. I do also just want to note that there are five conditions placed upon this if this were to be approved that Planning and Zoning Staff recommend be attached to this CUP amendment.
Yeah, do you wanna review the?
Definitely.
Yeah.
So Planning and Zoning Staff Division comments include adherence to Williams County zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. Number two, the use shall comply with all state and federal regulations and all local fire zoning and other applicable ordinances, codes, rules, and regulations. Number three, this CUP amendment is contingent upon the applicant receiving approval from North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality and Waste Management for radioactive materials license and a solid waste management permit and other associated state approval if required. I'd also just like to state and to follow up with what Diana had mentioned, they do currently have a solid waste management permit as they are in operating landfill. It would just be an amendment to that permit. Number four, following approval from DEQ to accept T-NORM waste, the applicant is limited to the state limit of 50 pico curries per gram of radium 226 and radium 228 with a limit of 25,000 tons per year and no more than two, no more than 3,000 tons in any one month. And that is following what's currently allowed by the state. Number five, Staff requests the applicant work with North Dakota Department of Transportation to answer their questions, perform a traffic operations study, and implement traffic operations study recommendations if and when deemed necessary by DOT. So this is a comment that was placed upon the conditional use amendment back when it was originally applied for in 2019. I followed up with DOT and this comment still stands. So their concern is that if traffic were to ever become more than anticipated by the applicant, that they would have to approach DOT, or DOT would approach them, and they'd have to conduct a traffic analysis study, or traffic operations study. That concludes Staff's comments.
Okay. Anything from DEQ that you wanted to add in regards to the Secure? Okay, just trying to follow the same order of things to try to be. Okay, no, that's, unless anybody needs to hear it again? Okay. Comments from Secure, the applicant?
Kurt Ray with Radiation Pros on behalf of Secure. I, I did not prepare a PowerPoint to spare you all some of the, you've seen it all, you've kinda been there and done that. So I do have a few comments that I think are worth mentioning. They are prepared comments, so forgive me if I'm, I'm reading a little bit more than usual. About 10 years ago, North Dakota regulators were faced with this issue that few states have encountered. Naturally occurring radioactivity had been discovered in the filter socks. No one had gotten sick, no one had died, but sophisticated instruments and laboratories confirmed that the low levels were present. Dave Glatt and the North Dakota Department of Health at the time, now the DEQ, they could abduct the issue, but they didn't. They had pressure from the industry, but they still took control of the situation. They, they literally stopped the disposal of any impacted materials going into state landfills for the protection and precaution of, of residents. They commissioned a study with Argon National Labs that we've been talking about, and they conclusively determined that despite radioactivity being present in oil and gas processes, workers, the public, and the environment would be completely safe at the prescribed levels. These are professionals who understand that just because you can measure small amounts of radiation, it doesn't mean that it's necessarily dangerous or harmful to human health or the environment. That summary, of course, from the NDDH back in 2014 is found on page 27 of the secure packet that you were given. But it pretty well documents what we were talking about earlier, that these levels on any adjacent property are extremely low and, in fact, barely detectable. I was at a water treatment facility about five weeks ago now in Colorado, and we were, it's a wastewater facility, and we had our instrumentation out. We were there to do surveys of the equipment. They had new processes, new, new digesters that were put into place. And the, the plant operator joined us as we were walking down in the basement of this new facility. Our, our instruments instantly began screaming, where we would find a normal background in the area of about 15 micro rankin' per hour, we were getting readings of 15,000 micro rankin' per hour. And we, we were floored. As radiation guys, we were fascinated. We kinda like it when we actually find something, we're a little bit sick that way. But these things were screaming. We, we couldn't figure out what was going on. We, we checked our instruments, we took them back outside, they seemed to be operating properly. We went and got a second instrument. Our health physicist was there, he went and got his instrument. Sure enough, we were getting 10,000 to 15,000 micro rankin' per hour. It turned out that the plant manager had been to the doctor that day, and he had had a PET scan done, and he'd been injected with radioactive isotopes in the dye to help with the detection effort. And I just found it curious that for all of the hullabaloo about norm and T-NORM and these low, low levels, that any one of us will go to the doctor and let them do whatever they want and fill us up with all kinds of stuff, right, that, that we would run scared of normally. So I think it's just really valuable perspective, right, to, to understand kinda what we're dealing with, with here. All that to say that Dave Glatt and Diana, Dale Patrick at the time, they, they did their job, they stepped into the void. Representatives like, like Mr. Richter, they participated in the process. They studied, they passed these T-NORM laws to eliminate some of the fear and consternation that, that was out there at the time. And they really resolved the issue once and for all for producers in North Dakotas, for North Dakotans, by establishing a one, once-for-all standard for landfills here in the state. I work in other states as well, and they haven't taken the same approach. They've made each individual landfill go, go in front of them. And so you end up with Colorado at 12,000 pico curries per gram, and Idaho headed for 10,000 pico curries per gram. And here in, in our state, we're at 50, if a landfill gets approved, at, at 50. All that to say that the guys have done a good job. Your Planning and Zoning folks have done a good job. They've studied this from Argon National Labs to state regulators to the WDEA, everybody has worn this thing out. Secure Energy is, is not a waste generator by themselves. We don't do any drilling or exploration. All we do is ser, we're a service company to help manage this waste and to minimize it. We're simply a private sector solution to an industry, industry problem. And of course, the state regulators, they're not in the business of solving industry problems. They're not gonna invest millions of tax dollars into solving this problem for us. And I appreciate it that you guys have been willing to, to take it on. At the end of the day, Secure operates these TRDs, these facilities, and they have some of this material that needs to be landfilled. And they, they spend a lot of money that gets passed on to the industry to get that done. In this review process, well, what we've seen, it's been interesting. You guys know, we've all kinda been through it together. There hasn't been any changes here like there have been in the Planning and Zoning Staff, or rather the Planning and Zoning Commission, Commissioners. We've been through this, and we've been in front of Black Tail Township not once, but twice. We've met with them three or four times now, and they've taken the time, as you guys have, to, to learn about the science, to consider the issues. They have watched how Secure operates. They drive by the landfill every day. And gosh, it couldn't be any less conspicuous. It's tucked away, far away from residents and from traffic and from noise. They couldn't do a better job. And at the end of the day, the township has voted not once, but twice now to support this application. And so I just encourage you to, to consider that. The Planning and Zoning folks last week, when they looked at Wisco's application to, to Barry's point, was that they should follow the township, and the township hadn't acted at the time. And then the township did act. But Secure has been in front of that all along, and they've consulted with the township, and, and they have, have support. So I, I just want that, I'd like to see you guys give that adequate consideration. Secure is doing their very best minimizing waste treating and recycling, as I've mentioned. And I really, I, I find it hard to imagine that you could find a better company to help solve a difficult situation. I know Keith Norbeck well, him and his family, they're, they're good people. Keith's a very talented engineer and businessman. I don't have a bad word to say about him, and I, I hope you successful, because I think he's part of the solution. But I also think Secure Energy is. And I, I don't know a better general manager than Sean Hammersmark. I don't know a better environmental person than Gretchen Anderson. And these guys are intimately involved in the operations, and they'll oversee things and do things the right way. And, and I'll be there to backstop them on the radioactive piece, the sampling, analysis, and compliance aspects. As you know, the industry has faced some significant headwinds in, in recent days. DAPL's been in flux, Keystone Pipeline has been canceled by, by the president, and he's not exactly supporting the industry that we all rely on. We've had COVID and the shutdown of the economy, and the results have been difficult. Difficult for almost every company, forcing Secure and others to make very difficult decisions, especially when it comes to employees and headcount, trying to preserve jobs. And those job losses and smaller royalty checks and loss of tax revenues, it's not good for anybody. So we, we wanna see things get going again and remove obstacles where we can, where we safely can for the industry. We, we don't wanna see North Dakota become number three, we want it to be number two. And, and, and that should be good enough. So I think the time is now, time to support Secure, the T-NORM rules that have been in place, their explicit limitations that have been in place since the, the rules were first promulgated. Because as, as you guys know, and as you voted already, this isn't a popularity contest. It's not about just how many hands are raised on each side, it's about, it's about your leadership, it's about solving big problems, it's about showing courage to lead, to impact the community, to impact jobs, to impact the financial health, and to protect and safeguard the people that live here. And I think we can accomplish and balance all of those things. Not, not everybody's gonna be happy, everybody's got, got fears and misgivings. But when you study the science, this is not a science question. It's more about the pragmatic issues of waste management. It's not about health, it's about, it's about the practical matters of an industry that we all rely on here locally. And so I, I hope that you'll consider the greater impact of the industry and would ask that you would vote for Secure and their need for this conditional use permit. Thanks very much, I appreciate your time, appreciate your diligence, appreciate the time that you took to stop, kinda stop and consider things over the last 18 months.
Kurt, before you go, could you address Marlene Sandacre's question as to whether or not the water was tested?
I, I am not familiar with that, I was not part of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't think that we were involved.
Yeah, well, that's why I was confused. Yeah.
She said it was Secure.
Hi, so I'm Kail Emmons, Facility Manager for Wisco. The previous manager for Wisco, actually, I went out with him and sampled their property. And I do have the analyticals on my phone, it was two pico curries per gram for their property. He's no longer here, so I couldn't tell you if he emailed it to her or what had happened, but those were the results for her land.
Would you be so kind as to make efforts to reach out to her?
Yes, I definitely will. Yes, and I do apologize, Marlene, if he did not, so we definitely will.
Thank you for that. Okay. Questions and/or comments in both support and opposition of this application?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dennis Torres, I work for Secure Energy, have for eight years. I'm at the Stanley facility. I started as an operator and now I manage it. Just some comments I wanted to bring up, I know everybody's concerned when they hear radiation. Myself, all my operators are trained yearly on how to deal and how to handle radiation. It's extensive training, it's, it's a full day, a lot of details. But we know how to handle it, we know how to deal with it. I understand there are communities concerned about, they hear the word radiation. I have family that lives right here, so I watch out for them myself. I'm really nervous, sorry guys. I, I hadn't planned on getting up here, but I, I just had to say this. And then like the NDCU, they come out, we never know when they're coming out, they just show up. And our doors are open for them all the time. We, we have nothing to hide. I feel that we do it right. I think that in the long run, I'm not saying the injection, the slur is the way to go, landfill, I don't know. But I know Secure will do it right. That's all I gotta say. Oh, one other thing, you were asking about tonnage, and how do you track that? When we send a load out, we have a manifest that has a number. We take our survey, our analytical, our manifest, and it goes with the driver. It goes to that disposal. They sign it, they fill it out, give it back to us with their survey and their tonnage, and then that's what we keep for documents at our site. So they don't wanna get shortchanged on charging us for, for what we dispose of. And I guess that's all I gotta say, if you got any comments or questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else would like to speak, please feel free to come up and don't be nervous. We're just normal people like anybody else. We're just normal people like anybody else.
I'll just add real quickly, um, Dennis did just get audited by the D E Q, as did the Keen facility, both unannounced inspections. I think they were looking for an excuse to go see KT's operation and, and hit ours on the way, uh, home. But, um, they both passed with flying colors. And over and over again, we hear from the radiation control folks that Secure sets the standard when it comes to radiation protection programs, safety documentation.
Thank you, Kurt. I believe there's comment.
Hello, my name's Davis Berger and we live about a mile and a half directly south of the Secure site. Um, I kind of know where this is headed, so I'm, I'm not going to speak very long. But I, I had a comment from, or what Kurt said, there was no residents there, he said, but there is. There's quite a few. But, um, you said there's going to be, uh, you're gonna, what was it, uh, um, you're gonna, right after this, you were going to, uh, with her. Um, lim- a limit on the, uh, how many? I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering if it's going to be one or is it going to two? And then is that going to be the end? How are we going to determine how many of these landfills are we going to have?
That will be up to the commission to decide. All I asked for is that we look at adopting in ordinance as a whole world charter. To limit the number of these facilities. I won't put a number on it. If I did, I guess I would say three.
Okay.
Would be the max because that's basically how many landfills we probably have in Williams County already.
Okay.
But it'll be up to this board to decide whether or not they even want to do it or how many they want to limit it to.
Okay, all right. Um, and another question I have is if, if Secure, I guess Wisco's already in, but if you approve Secure, now are we going to be able, is Montana going to be hauling here? That's another thing. Are they going to be hauling their waste? Are they going to, is that?
One just, one just question, uh, I don't want to say correction, but comment I'll say is, it's, it's approved from a planning and zoning perspective. It still has to run the gambit of the state approval. So we, again, just so you know, that's, that's, there is a further approval and public hearing and public comment.
But that's one question I had now, if they, all the Montana or whoever, will they be allowed to haul here also back? I mean, we were worried about, you know, we shouldn't be hauling our stuff to Montana. Are they going to be hauling that here? So, um, and I'm hoping you'll vote no.
Thank, thank you. Please respond.
Well, I, I would say, mention, but just for the simple economics of it, I, 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 they won't, I'm, you know, if I was paying the freight bill, you wouldn't go past the first available one. I mean, I don't see him coming this way just for, just for the dollars and cents of this deal.
That's exactly right. Yeah, I appreciate, um, Davis, I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Uh, you're, you're exactly right, Barry, that, uh, transportation is a huge factor in the cost of disposal. So ultimately, uh, where, uh, Montana has, uh, an exact same, uh, criteria for disposal at 50 pico curries per gram, there would be no reason for somebody that was closer to Glendive or Lindsay, Montana, to, to come up to Wisco or to Secure Energy. They're, they're going to go to the closest facility. So theoretically, if somebody was right across the line in Bainsville or something, they, they might come over to Wisco. But they're not going to go far and there's other disposal options that are much, much closer. Did I get that wrong? Was it Bainville?
It happens all the time.
I said Bainsville. My apologies, I, I do know better, so. So, thank you.
Mr. Ray, while you're there, um, just out of curiosity, how much fresh water does a facility like this use? Is it, I mean, do they use it for anything other than toilet flushing and whatnot?
There is, um, where, where did my?
We don't.
Billy, there we go. You don't, you don't, you don't, you don't use freshwater for anything?
What about dust control?
Um, the freshwater, the freshwater that we truck in is for toilets, sinks, stuff like that. It's just at the admin building. Um, and that's just depending on the use, it'd be the same as for a home. If I got four people in the office, I'll use more than if there's just one. And then we use our storm water, which Gretchen, our environmental quality person for Secure, takes a sample of our storm water and sends it off to a lab first so that we know that we haven't picked up anything else from the site. And then we use that for our dust control, so the rainwater. We store it in a pond, put it up in a back trailer and spray it over the road for part of road maintenance. If we have no storm water, then when we do the road maintenance, we will purchase the freshwater. But it just comes out of the, oh, public water disposal down at the corner.
I, the only reason I ask is, I mean, in my situation, I mean, uh, my thing is I'm all about being good neighbors. So I was going to ask Mrs. Berger if she has roll water or if anybody out there have roll water. In our area, we just got it. But we found out that they have already, I mean, the pipe is too small. Long story short, it's tough to get water. So as a neighbor, I mean, in consideration of the neighbors around you, I mean, access to roll water, I wish that Wisco would have done that years ago. If they would have been on the plan, then the, then the engineering of it would have built a bigger water system. So the other thing is if you do start using roll, roll water, I mean, the, the industry sells roll water for industrial uses. So, I mean, obviously they're there to make money, but my thing is that is a good neighborly thing to do. Sign up for roll water to make sure that all the rest of your neighbors that might be close would have access to it. And I'm not discounting Wisco, I'm just saying, years ago, I mentioned that to the plant manager. This is going to come, you know, it would be nice if you guys would sign up to it.
I know our Keen facility is on the roll water for Keen. I know the 13 mile facility has a well that they use for their freshwater, the F S T at the corner. Um, and we have ours trucked in, so whether we would have a well or roll water would be. We don't have it now, that'd be way.
Yeah, it's, I was just curious, so thanks.
Appreciate it.
Any additional comments, questions?
Good morning. My name is Eugene Davis. Uh, I live in Ray here in Williams County, resident. Uh, concerned residents, um, of Williams County have asked me to come and speak to you. Full disclosure, prior manager of this facility for three years. Uh, very familiar, extensive familiarity with the site, with the processes. T-Norm experience, same R S O certification as, uh, Secure's rep that has talked to you today. A number of the, uh, folks in planning and zoning in the community have asked several questions. Some we've already answered, um, but, uh, I'll just go through a few right now. What problem are we solving? Is this a Williams County problem? Is this a state problem? To what extent and how many landfills, um, would it take? Or disposal wells, would it take to solve this problem? We've talked about that extensively. What impact will Williams County expect? What risks are involved? Talked about that extensively. Are there other options? Does this need to happen here in this county or in this case at this facility? Does it need to happen now? If so, is this the best method for this waste stream and region? More importantly, for this company and site, is this the best option? And how many do we need? Can we trust the process and the staff to execute, execute in the decades to come? Review of comments and concerns. The slideshow wasn't gone over today, but there were some concerns that were brought up. Um, one of the, uh, slides and, and, uh, will go in least severe to most, I guess, uh, was public donations. Uh, the slideshow was dated from 2019 that was put in front of the planning and zoning and the public. What community involvement has Secure done recently was the question that was asked. Uh, P D, fire department, youth hockey, Grand Palace rodeo, saddle club rodeo, the list goes on. Cleanup Williston, Christmas tree event. We know 2020 was hard on everyone, but, uh, to lead the public, that, uh, the new management team is as involved with our communities as the prior team was and is misleading. Uh, the joke was brought up that you can still social distance in Cleanup Williston. You can still be involved in your community. What is also misleading is the photos that were in that slideshow. Did you know the majority of the site and staff photos are not of the facility in question? Only one prior staff member and only one photo of the facility is, uh, in that slideshow. And that photo was taken two years ago when the site was open to the public 24 hours a day. Many will ask, why is any of this relevant? Why are we taking the time to listen to this? Plays into the factual information that's conveyed and the trust that we're bestowing upon this organization. Planning and zoning also questioned the dilution rate of T-Norm material that would be disposed of. Secure's representative, R S O from Colorado, stated that it is nine to one. This is what their slideshow, um, also displayed. This is misleading. It's a gross exaggeration. In fact, Secure is known for three years by way of depletion forecasts that the landfill would need to open cell four much sooner than anticipated. It was at this time that they raised the 1.2 million in capital needed to construct cell four. However, in December of 2019, as we discussed, Williams County put a moratorium on T-Norm by March of 2020. Area management advised corporate to cancel construction, even though contractors were begging for the work at considerable discounts just to ensure cash flow during the uncertain year ahead. By July, this would seal the fate of eight out of the 10 employees. That's eight families in your community. Two of those employees were top 10 for Secure's longest standing in North Dakota with seven and eight years of dedicated service to the company. We all know it was a very hard year, tough decisions needed to be made, but the knowledge, skills and experience and certifications and customer relations lost is not something you can just hire six new folks for if this passes today. That is Secure's voiced intent. Many of you own businesses. Several of you oversee employees at some level. It is extremely difficult to hire now, especially good help, skilled help and even experienced help. I'd ask that you would ponder this for just a moment. Secure is asking us to trust in this market that they will find six employees. What are the odds? Let's explore this for just a moment. This is a landfill. Think for a moment, how many folks do you know that work for or have worked for a landfill, any landfill? Put on your, put your fingers up for every person you know that has that skill set and experience. Any of you? Think for a sec, how many? Okay. Now consider that this is not your local M S W or local landfill. This is the next step. This is special waste landfill. And not just a special waste landfill, but one that is permitted to receive heavy industrial waste, which is greater risk and impact than a traditional M S W. Of the, of the folks that you referenced in your mind or by holding your fingers up in the air, when you raise your fingers, how many of them have experience or are certified by the state to handle these waste streams? Now assuming that you have any fingers left up in the air, ponder if passed, this will be the second radioactive landfill in North Dakota to this point, as of this morning. Would have been the first, but we'll adjust to the second. The standard all others will reference, again, if you have any fingers left, who of those folks have experience handling T-Norm? Think about that, guys, seriously. How many folks do you know that have experience in a landfill that are available to get hired today to get up to speed to handle this waste stream? And how many of them have any experience handling radioactive materials? It's concerning. I think we can all agree that this is not a favorable position, arguing a recipe for disaster. A community member noted in the last meeting, you can buy 6 million in gadgets and have great policies, but it is the people that will choose to operate accordingly. 600,000 would have kept the team assembled and trained to receive the waste. Certified operators, T-Norm surveyors, technicians with years of experience, surveying tens of thousands of trucks. A team built on years of trust to do the right thing. Countless safety meetings, storm events, all gone for $600,000. 600,000 in labor costs, labor costs the PPP had absorbed up until July and would continue to do so after July. So many options. Why not perhaps keep half or just adjust the hours? It was brought to our attention that the G M said no and was unwilling to fight for our jobs, our families. And now the communities of Williams County are being asked to remember the good that was done two years ago by those very same employees, those very same families. They came out to pick up the trash on our roadsides. I don't think it's good reason to grant approval. It's purely about money, folks, nothing more. Please do not be fooled by eloquent words or presentations of kitty litter, Coleman lanterns, from a representative who have called upon in a time of need is three states away. Please look at the facts. It's all about money. Planning and zoning member stated, I'll paraphrase, concerned that we are not solving a problem. It does however, appear to be a great potential of making one if it passes. A community member stated at the informational meeting, why have they closed the landfill and let everyone go? Is it because they have been there too long, know too much? Perhaps, I'm not going to guess. There is no doubt that the crew would not self-report. It is on record. Our competition knew it. They picked up our past employees, mentioned that even with a drone from above, on a hundred truck days, the crew surveyed every single truck that came in. They followed every policy and procedure. This is our competition trying to catch us doing something wrong. In talking to one of the prior employees, they suspect they hired all new, um, staff would allow the narrative of the past to be told as desired. No one left to object. It's also much cheaper too. Veterans make too much. While in the discussion of many, let's get back to the dilution. On the slideshow, slide slated nine to one. When asked, the representative from Colorado stated nine to one is accurate. It is not. Let me explain where this number comes from, why it was accurate in 2019 and gross exaggerated in Secure's favor here in 2021 at the planning and zoning meeting. In 2019, this facility had 10 full-time employees on site, as we've discussed. One dedicated salesman to just this facility. Average tons per month were 24,000. There were 13 rigs on average in Williams County. As we discussed, there are only four today. It is possible that they will grow, but those are the facts. That's almost 30,000, or 300,000 tons, rather, for quick and easy math. Take 25,000 tons, total non-T-Norm waste, divided by 3,000 max allowable T-Norm, and you get their dilution rate. The problem with this is that in 2019, volumes are not anywhere near the previous 12 months. In the last 12 months, um, many things have changed. One of those things that has changed is the, uh, activity in this landfill. Secure's landfill was technically open by state standard, but receiving very little, if any, waste. Picture of the facility in their slideshow is equally out of date and misleading. It was taken in 2019, as I mentioned before, the driveway was graded. Trash was picked up, fence was in great shape, grass was mowed. What has changed? Today, the gate is locked, tumbleweeds greet you, grass hasn't been mowed. Very different sight if you pull up to their fence and take a close look. I'm sure Secure would argue that once they get approval, they will build and get all those customers back. But let's put this into perspective. 25,000 tons, you can argue how much you can fit in a truck, but let's do easy math. 25 tons per truck, that's plus or minus 800 to 1,000 trucks. And speaking with several folks in the industry, the work isn't here to support that and they're happy where they're disposing. So why has Secure misled us? This is all public information. Each month, Secure, along with all the other landfills, file a monthly report to the D E Q. Look and you will see that this is not accurate. Another platform Secure used to get this license was a desire to handle their own waste. Stating all Secure waste, with exception to T-Norm, is handled cradle to grave, in-house. A stance they took great pride in and promoted very often. That also has changed in the last 12 months. Little, if any, is going on, is going to their landfill. So it poses the question, why, if this is the best practice, have they compromised and are now comfortable sending their waste to other disposals? Furthermore, why not, uh, work out an agreement with a slurry well and ship T-Norm there? Until, uh, once this gets approved, there's going to be at least a year or two when construction is completed. And that disposal well that, uh, we just spoke of in depth, KT Enterprises, is closer to the two busiest facilities. We talked about trucking. We're trucking a lot of waste from two other counties into our county. Take a look at what actual T-Norm waste is being produced here in Williams County. So it provides less trusting, less reliant on the industry to provide tens of thousands of tons for dilution. While we're on the subject of environment and waste volumes, let's talk about daily cover. In-house waste is down, costs are up. With no revenue, there are some concerns. You had brought up dust control. We talked about drought. We talked about traffic. Look at the design of Secure's landfill, of DeShawn's landfill, of Wisco's landfill, of any of the other landfills. Look to see what the differences are. If you look at Secure's landfill, your water table is much higher. The landfill is protruding out of the ground already, not when it's completed, already. I'll just use Wisco because they were here today. Their water table is much, much lower. Majority of that landfill is below ground. Don't know if anyone's noticed, but it's very windy in North Dakota. That's gonna have a factor here. That's gonna play into it. Wind leads to evaporation. Evaporation leads to dust control. In this current drought, we've, we've been lucky enough to get some rain around here. But in other counties, other places, they, they don't have the rain that we've gotten, but we still are not up to standard. We talk about water tables, we talk about aquifers and reservoirs. The water's probably gonna continue to come from Western area water supply. Water supply that pulls out of the same drinking water that my community pulls out of. So now you're, you're putting a strain on the communities and the residents around you. It's very real. You're not talking about a small wellhead like KT has. You're talking about a very large tract of land, eventually 45 acres of open space that you're managing. Granted, at any point in time, that's about 10 to 15 acres of open space, but still 10 to 15 acres. That's a lot of land to have to dose water on to keep it wet. If you go over to the old Williston Airport and watch them mix and stir to get compaction, how much water are they going through? It's a real issue, guys. It's a real issue to get that water transported. Anyways, leads to trackout, we've talked about that. At this facility, there's no pavement. There's no cattle guards at this time, they're talking about them, but there's no talk of wash pads. Why do they, why do they find it important to put wash pads at their facilities? Why does KT find it important to put wash pads at their facility? So that they can wash off tires before trucks leave the pad? Yet we're relying on a cattle guard to catch about one foot of a tire space to rattle off all of that trackout and that mud, not just from the trucks that are coming in, that thousand trucks we talked about, but also the water trucks that are coming in that are deliberately applying moisture to this to make it mud, which sticks to tires, which becomes a trackout issue. All this stuff costs extra money. Wind, waste is down. It's above ground. Anyways, we talked about air monitors. I'm, I'm concerned, are they proven in this climate? Do you know? Do they freeze in the winter? Is it always? Is it always gonna work? Has it been proven in other environments? We haven't talked about air monitoring in Alaska landfills. And we hear plenty of oilfield guys from Alaska that say that it's colder down here in North Dakota than it is up there. Where's my extra set of long johns? How is this fancy equipment gonna work? How is it gonna react? I don't think we should be too hasty to make quick decisions for multiple facilities until we answer some of these questions. Planning and zoning was concerned, a vote of no would suggest regulation of commerce. This is not the case, but rather diligently working to care for the land and represent the people by using the best practices available closest to the source. This is still oilfield, heavy industrial and radioactive waste discussed. It's zoned for proper disposal, all target hazards and emergency services, environmental and property values, water and access. These are all areas that it impacts. If we feel accepting T-Norm waste is necessary at this time, is this the best site? The site appears to be closest to significant groundwater, drinking water sources, multiple communities. Access, or drinking water access, of the T-Norm permits in Q and the DEQ, this is the only site dependent on county maintained roadways, which equals extra cost to maintain. Remember, leachate truck traffic, dust control, truck traffic, nine to one dilution rates of 25,000 tons is 800 to 1,000 trucks, 3,000 tons per month, another 120 trucks in and out for T-Norm, two and a half trucks a day, but if you actually look at it, 25 tons, 3,000 tons, that's 120 trucks that are going in and out on your county roads. That's more wear and tear that your county is gonna have to absorb. More wear and tear that your state is gonna have to absorb on Highway 85. Further concerns with blending and dilution, serious concerns of materials received at greater than 50 pico curries and blending it down. This is a concern. It is not monitored at the site level by outside agencies. It does happen daily. It is not common or impossible to take waste at, say, 700 micro R per hour and use the verbiage like material and blend to go below 50 pico curries per gram to get it into your landfill. I encourage you to be cautious of this. Also, consider the more sites approved, the greater the strain to the state and its staff. Their staff, which is already taxed and budgeted and availability. And their area to cover as well as activity, as mentioned, they're quite a ways away. They're not right here in our backyard. Do we need this one? Do we want cost or potential cost to the impact? The landfill is there, but it's really not operating. A very different dynamic instead of circumstances. It does have township approval, but planning and zoning vote a five to two against. Why such a strong vote against? In Colorado, Idaho, Montana, Texas, to name a few, not all landfills are approved to handle technical waste streams. We not want to make these decisions here, but it's in front of us. Do you think perhaps the townships support the given appeared activity or delinquency of? Something to ponder. I have, and I find it concerning. I know many of the players involved. Gretchen, Billy, great staff, glad, glad they are there. They really are. They're great staff. But is that enough? I agree you need to show courage, and I agree that you need to lead today. But it's, for me, it's different reasons, different concerns. Closing, we are not regulating commerce, but we are rather choosing to support the community in available and following the best available environmental practices and design. Now we decide the best option and how many. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you very much for your comments. Beth, what?
I was just gonna see if I could get a copy of this thing.
Oh. Okay. One of the questions that I had was related to staff and what's going on with Secure. So Kurt, maybe you wanna, if that's your department to address, that should be addressed.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's not entirely my area to address. In fact, most of it is not, but I'll address a few. Oh, there we go. There's a guy. He can help. Why don't you, why don't you handle that and I'll address a couple?
Josh Fox, Field Safety Advisor. I've also managed that landfill in the past and I've been with Secure since 2012 originally on the drilling side. So pretty in-depth and familiar with the leadership of Secure. So what was your question exactly?
I would like you to address the concerns about the staff and the operation of that landfill, having been only by appointment only for the last however many months and?
Yeah, I mean, as we all know, COVID had a major slowdown with the whole industry. It comes down to cost. You cannot stay open and continue to lose money. You have to be cost effective. So we made changes that we had to stay alive. It's better to keep what we have versus losing it altogether. Would you agree? We don't wanna lose the landfill. And keep it open, keep it as a bare minimum until times get better, we can retrain, rehire, and open back up.
Those are the plans at this point?
Yes.
I mean, from a staffing perspective, you, you feel like you can staff up and train up and become operational again as you were before?
Oh, with, with confidence. So again, you know, since my history of Secure, I know Secure is not gonna open up tomorrow with brand-new hands and go to work. If, you know, we make progress on this application, I could say for sure that we would begin the process of looking at our training program, looking at candidates and starting that process to be ahead of the curve. Secure is not gonna take one load of, of T-Norm material with unqualified staff. It's just what we do not do.
Okay.
I'd like to just address a couple of things. Yes, Eugene, Eugene Davis was a longtime employee. He was a casualty of the downturn, not a result of any misconduct or any performance issues. He's, he's a good employee who did the right thing day in and day out. And it's, it's really unfortunate when, when there's just not the volume to sustain, to sustain operations. So it's, it's been difficult. And it's unfortunate, too, that, that that leads to some bitterness and some hardship. I understand it. It's very real. He's got a family to support. And, you know, it's, it is an economic reality that's very, very difficult. It's hard on Sean Hammer's mark and others. We all have bosses. Corporate offices have spreadsheets. Those spreadsheets have profit and loss statements. They have lists of employees. And you guys understand it. You're all business people. You understand what I'm talking about. There have been no purposeful misrepresentations by myself or anybody at Secure Energy. Last week, we did dust off the old presentation because there were new, new planning and zoning commissioners who had not been aware of what was presented in 2019. We did not update everything, not, not by way of purposeful misrepresentation. They were, it was all of the accurate information from 2019 when we first met with, with you all. Employee pictures. You understand the world that we live in, that you can't use pictures without people's express permission. So there were some canned photos of Secure employees in the presentation for polish and presentation purposes. They were not all pictures that were taken right at the landfill. Again, for legal liability issues, the nine to one dilution, effective dilution rate was true in 2019. And it would be different today. But again, once the landfill is up, up and operating, there still will be effective dilution. It, it's directly proportionate to the number of drilling rigs and the amount of exploration and production waste that's being generated. Experienced people, Secure Energy, every single employee for Secure Energy has T-Norm training. I know it because I keep those records for them. They all have had at least an eight-hour course and annual training. And so that piece is already covered. There is a separate radiation protection program with some minor modifications that are specific to landfill operations. And that training has not been delivered to anybody yet, even though it's fully prepared and presented to the Department of Environmental Quality. It has not been presented to anybody yet because we haven't been allowed to accept T-Norm yet. So that will happen in due time. There is certification required by the DEQ in terms of landfill operations. Secure Energy still has four people or five. Gretchen, help me out, is it four or five people that are currently still trained in landfill operations?
It should be five.
Five, five. So we, we have not fully depleted our landfill operations staff. We still have experienced operators in place. By Gene's own words at the end, he said, there's still some great staff left. And so, again, very difficult corporate decisions that are, that are made and are waiting. To say, to say that we have stopped supporting the community would not be accurate. Obviously, when times are good, it's easier to be generous. And when times are lean and you're looking at job cuts, it's harder to be generous. I don't have those donation numbers. I apologize for that. I didn't anticipate.
I would, I would suggest that it would look really, really bad if you started donating a bunch of money while you were letting people go.
Thanks. Thank you for that. I appreciate your sensitivity to it. There is, in the radiation protection program, surveys outlined near the gate area to make sure that radioactive material does not, not only not go on county roads, but on the private roads that lead up to the landfill. There's actually more private road leading to the landfill than any county roads. If you've driven up to Secure, it's a very, very small stretch of county road. Other than that, it's, it's Highway 85 going to the landfill. The landfill design, of course, is very important. DEQ monitors that very, very closely, and they, they do a good job holding us accountable. So again, I, I don't wanna take anything away from Gene Davis or his family or anybody else who's ever worked for Secure. Secure hires well. They train well, they develop well, and they, and they still care about people. I had talked to Sean extensively about these things, and, and he would love to hire some, some of these experienced people back. And, and I'd love to get this landfill back up and operating. Once we receive approval, without being presumptuous about that, we still have the DEQ process. There, there is a need for a fourth cell that is part of a nine-cell that's operation that's been outlined with the DEQ for many years now. And so there haven't been other, any other changes in terms of their plans for operations. So we, we just need to get the industry revved up and going again. That, that hedging of, of prices right now is, is working against us a bit. Once we start seeing drill rig activity pick up, we'll be in a much better place. Oh, the, the last thing I'd like to mention. Yes, I'm from Colorado. This is my fourth trip up here just this month. I keep United Airlines well-supported. But I also have my own company here, and I have two full-time employees in the Bakken, including here in North Dakota. And so I have two radiation safety officers that are just a little ways away. So if I can't get here, I do have other qualified staff. Thank you so much.
I'll just add a few more things. So all, all of leadership at Secure is trained for RSO. I've been trained at RSO. We'll continue doing that, going forward. But then also, so I've been here since 2006, moved in from Wisconsin. I got a family here. I'm about 10 miles from this landfill. And I'm not going anywhere. And I'm in favor of this as a Secure employee, but also as a resident of Williams County. I think it's a good thing and, and I support it. And I think Secure has a good reputation, and I think we're gonna maintain that reputation going forward. And I'll stand behind it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanna let people know, I'm Bob LeCoq again. I have nothing against Secure. I used to work for Secure. My, I have family that works for Secure. They, they're a good organization. But you guys did bring up, you said at one point, you know, how many of these facilities do we need to manage the waste in North Dakota? So as I've seen so far, Wisco has somewhat approval or the beginning of approval. So you have a landfill now, and now you have KT Enterprises. I think Keith told you that he can handle 97% of the waste already at our facility. Now you have a landfill that's looking to be approved with Wisco. You don't need a Secure. Why would you need another Secure? I mean, why do you need two landfills in the same county? It makes absolutely no sense. I mean, you have one that you're looking to get approved, and you also have a slurry ejection well. Now that it can take, well, as Keith said, it could take 97% of the waste. Now you have a solution for the other things that we can't pump down. So a landfill and a slurry well is all you need to handle the T-Norm waste in North Dakota. Having another landfill is pointless. It, it makes, it makes no logical sense for people that you guys represent, the people of this county. I mean, you also have to look at the environment, you have to look at farmland, you have to look at a lot of different things. It's not just about business. It's about making a decision for what's best for the people of Williams County and for the state of North Dakota. So yes, you know, maybe two, maybe the solution of having a landfill in KT, I'm hoping that, you know, from KT's point of view, it's just KT. But if you have a landfill, you do have KT. I mean, that covers what you guys are trying to address. There's no point in having two of them. It's nothing personal, but Wisco already got approved. And so another thing I wanna point out, when I was working for Secure, I was their sales representative. I do know for a fact that Wisco took, I, I'd say about 100% of the drill cutting waste you guys have taken in. I've sent you drill cutting waste. All right, Wisco. Why does Wisco get drill cutting waste from all over the Bakken? Prices. Their prices are lower. Secure was not able to compete anymore, and they can't even sit there and tell you they can. They weren't able to compete with other landfill. They weren't able to compete with Wisco because Wisco had the lower prices and the waste came in there. So what I'm trying to say is, will waste shift from one place to another? It's still gonna be about pricing. Waste's still gonna go from one side of North Dakota to the cheapest location. I mean, so if, if Secure's got a landfill, it doesn't mean waste is gonna go into Secure. It's gonna go to the one who has the lowest price. And that's gonna probably be, as it has been, Wisco, because their prices are a lot lower. I mean, from 12, $12 a ton to tip to $20 a ton to tip at regular waste was the difference between Secure and Wisco. So now, I don't know what the T-Norm prices are gonna be, but price- So we know, I don't know what the T norm prices are going to be, but price does pay a part, play a part in where waste is shifted and goes. And people are going to travel to where it's cheaper to take it, so.
Thank you. Additional comments? Perhaps, uh, Diana, could you address some of the DEQ perspective on, uh, from the comments that were made earlier? Related to Secure, and then also, could you address, well, let's start with that.
So Diana, Trustful Solid Waste Program Manager at North Dakota DEQ. Um, I think some of the comments you were hoping for was related to their activity status at the landfill.
Right.
So Secure did notify us that they were going to be going to by appointment only, they're not the only site to do that. Uh, we've actually had that happen to, to other oilfield special waste landfills. They still have to maintain their, um, current operations with it, so they still have to do their inspections, their groundwater, groundwater monitoring. Um, if they do get loads in, they still have to do their full inspections with that waste screening, so none of that goes away, and that's a big misnomer. We actually had the same thing happen at one of our municipal solid waste landfills that take, um, household trash, so. It doesn't happen a lot, but we do have provisions in place for that, so. From our perspective, it didn't change anything other than when we go out? Sometimes we have to call someone when we get there to say, hey, can you open the gates so we can get in? Otherwise, we just hop the gates with it. Um, regarding the training for staff? Secure, like all of our other oilfields did, have been sending, um, operators to our landfill operator training course. It used to be a voluntary one, um, that was a comment we've received a lot during our public comment periods, just for any landfills is, how do you know the operators are trained? So when we did a rule change that took effect July first of two thousand twenty, we did require that all of our oilfield special waste landfills have a minimum of one certified operator onsite whenever they're open. Um, like our municipal solid waste landfills, most of these sites took that to mean, well? The guys are going to want vacation, they may get sick, things happen, most of them have three to five operators that are certified with that. Were there any other questions?
Yeah, there, there's, I think one of the comment was related to your staff or the DEQ staff and being able to regulate this industry? Uh, that you're short-staffed and, and few and far between and far away. Uh, could you address those concerns?
Sure, so currently for this solid waste program, and actually I'll step back to two thousand nineteen, at that point, we had nine staff plus myself with it. Um, one of those staff was a halftime solid waste, halftime asbestos, and they're located over in Fargo. We do had, at that time, we had six people that were going out to do inspections. Um, since then, we were able to fill another position with that, um, I was allowed to, so we actually have ten staff with it that, um, supports the solid waste program, including me. So now we have seven inspectors that can go out to those facilities with it. Uh, we've been able to keep up our monthly inspections without a problem, um, we just did a couple rounds. Uh, about two weeks ago, we had staff go out, um, even with COVID downturn, that's what we're budgeted and that's what we'll continue doing. The facilities do supply the department with a twenty thousand dollar annual fee? To support that inspection program to make sure that we can continue operating that. So I'm confident we can do that, um, radiation control is fully staffed, um, able to go out and do their inspections, we work together, we can work separately. So we don't have any concerns at the department on maintaining that.
Okay.
I, one thing I caught, um, I thought earlier you mentioned that you're, they are not allowed to dilute waste? Um, there's been talk of nine to one dilution ratios, what?
Yep, so, yeah, and I could see that be a little confusing, so what they're referring to is the site would be allowed to accept up to twenty-five thousand tons per year of T norm waste. In addition, they would still be accepting the rest of the oilfield special waste and industrial waste. So if you take what they would be accepting in non-T norm waste versus the T norm waste, that's where they're talking, that dilution, it's not an actual bringing it in and diluting it to get under the numbers with it, it's just meaning the landfill is not fully T norm.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Uh, any other comments, questions, concerns? Again, we're, we want to make sure we cover everything. Again, we're just, we'll be patient, uh, we want to make sure that if anybody's, uh, wants to share any comments or questions? Concerns, that they, they're allowed to be heard. Okay. What are the wishes of this board? Were there any more questions? I just want to make sure we are, uh, covering all bases. Yeah, I'm wait, uh, yeah, wishing, what are the wishes of the board? Well, no, I, I, I'm assuming there's. Well, we can, we can be patient, I like to, yeah, we're assuming there's nothing else from the crowd, but what are the wishes of the board?
Well, I would make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I would just say one thing, like that, that the slurry wells, the KT's, it, it, I think it's fantastic, I, it would be, I hope, great success, that would, that, that's, that's how I would like to see things go, but we have one well in the whole state that's two and a half months old. You know, if, if, if we were to decide that, okay, you're going to handle a hundred percent or ninety-seven percent of the waste out of the state? If, if you, you know, if your Packer goes out, or I mean, if you have trouble? Then what? I mean, we can't, it's that all are eggs in one basket kind of a thing, and, um, there's, you know, the hard equipment and stuff, obviously. I mean, you can't pump thread protectors and, you know, all that business, so, um, I don't think we've, you know, shot ourselves in the foot too hard here with, you know, two of them, so that's just my comment, but.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Okay, hearing done, Beth, roll call vote.
Steve?
Yes.
Beau?
No.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Is there anything else from planning and zoning? I think that's the, I think that's everything on the agenda. We will adjourn.